Good evening, everyone.
Good tardes a todos.
We're gonna get started in just one second.
Vamos a empezar en un segundo.
Thank you for your patience. Just give us one second. Dr. Hersler's month. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session after our opening procedures. The public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star and I if assessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, if you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to item B three, the land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Trustee Gonzalez Hoya, would you please read this for us?
Yes, thank you. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenan, Murekma, Karken, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We will now move to agenda item B four, the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board's anti-racist statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and an active effort to identify challenge and correct racial inequities and systems and institutions within our schools and communities. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of West Contra Costa Unified School District education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity that they produce have shaped us, our schools and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our own personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff, member, and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being. While building strong and inclusive school communities, we commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, we are now on agenda item B five. Could you do roll call, please?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Phillips. It's not here, absent. Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Student trustee Adil Goparav is absent and student trustee Palkar is absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, we're now moving to agenda item B six, report and ratification of closed session. Do you have anything to report out, sir?
Absolutely, ma'am. Thank you very much. Item A two point one, the board voted to approve the appointment of John Hillier as principal of Ella Horse Elementary School. The roll call vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, no. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips was absent. The vote carries. The board voted to appoint, to approve the appointment of Chang Sehao, Sechow, as principal of Highland Elementary School. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Garcia Reyes as principal of Richmond High School. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Siobhan Pagillian Green as director of Special Education Secondary. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Michelle Forrest as director of Communications. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Jawan Eldridge as director of Human Resources, classified. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Smith, I'm sorry, President Smith Folds, yes. And Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Cheryl Lewis as director of Business Services. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to appoint, approve the appointment of Guthrie Fleishman as Selbit Director. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. The board voted to approve the appointment of Laurie Roberts as interim chief technology officer. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee, President Smith Folds, yes. And Trustee Phillips, absent. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Hurst, do we have our student performer here?
Yes, we do.
Absolutely wonderful. Can we call our student performer up, please?
Yes, do we have, um, is the student here, sir? No, not yet. Okay, so the student is not here yet, but I think the student is coming. Okay.
Thank you so much. Then when the student comes, whenever we see the student, we can stop, put the student in, and then we can finish public comment if they come before the hour is up. We are now moving to agenda item B eight, public comment. How to address the board? I'm going to read it again. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education and WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form, or if participating via Zoom, individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. If we have public comment that is going to last over an hour, at that hour mark, we then have public comment for one minute instead of two minutes. All right, staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Carrie Bean.
If there's a, oh, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight on the proposed budget cuts to Fairmont Elementary School's site budget. So my name is Carrie Bean and my daughter, Risa Bean, just completed her, completed first grade at Fairmont Elementary School. Risa has struggled to learn to read. As a result of her struggles, we learned about this district's broader challenges with literacy and that the superintendent recently called literacy their number one priority. We also learned as a result of my daughter's struggles that Fairmont Elementary is already tremendously under-resourced in terms of literacy interventions. Interventions at Fairmont are already focused on the children of highest need. That is, the children who are already far behind where they should be. Against this backdrop, it strikes me as unconscionable to cut a budget that directly supports literacy intervention. There's already so little in terms of literacy intervention available at Fairmont. The school site funds are also used for recess supervision hours. So my wife volunteers routinely at Fairmont at recess. And we often receive emails already before the budget cuts indicating that the school is in urgent need of parents to come volunteer at recess. I can't even imagine what it will be like after the budget cuts when there's no lot, when there's even less funds available to support staffing at recess. I want to say that Fairmont Elementary School is a school that has a lot of needs and really needs this funding. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Denise Steen. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, President. Jamila Smith Folds, board, Dr. Hurst. This is Denise Steen, president of WCCAA, and I have two points to make. First, I'd like to mention that in two weeks, the site plans, SPSAs, will go to the board for approval. I want you to know that our plans are written and written well. However, many of our individual site compliance PAC documents have been rejected out of the DTS vault over and over again. Please understand this and approve all of our site plans despite the DTS fault not being understandable, accurate, or easily accessible. And please work toward making changes to the DTS vault so that the process is much smoother for the 24, 25 school year. Secondly, and more positively, I want to acknowledge, appreciate, and celebrate all the hard work that our site administrators have done during this very difficult year of change. We have improved scores, worked through many challenges, and we've built teams of dedicated teachers, pairs, and support providers who care about children, their education, and their well-being. It's been a tough year, but we made it through, and I want to congratulate everyone for their hard work and making it through the 23, 24 school year. I want to thank every WCCUSD site team. Have a great summer and peace.
Our next public comment is Gina Shane Bommy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gina. I'm a parent at Fairmont. My child is Landon, who will be in third grade next year. I just wanted to come and speak to you and let you know that losing Title One would be very bad for our school. It's a huge chunk of money that we can't afford to lose. I volunteer sometimes for lunch and being there, I see a huge need at recess, at lunch. I honestly worry about my child's safety. I tell my son, I tell other kids all the time, all his friends, go tell the grown-up. But there's literally no grown-ups, and that really hurts my heart. So we cannot afford to lose any more money. We can't afford to lose site supervisors. That's a very important thing for me. Another area I'm very, very worried about is that we might lose after-school programs. And being as diverse as Fairmont is, we cannot afford to lose any extra things for these kids. Like most of these parents' kids don't even speak English, like just, just, had to help a parent interpret a report card because she didn't even understand it. Like I used every kind of way to convey the message of what the report card was trying to tell this, this, how the kid was doing in school. And it was really hard and she wanted, she asked, what can I do? How can I help? I was like, well, can you, can you like read to your kid? And she doesn't even know how to read. So, and there's so many different languages at Fairmont. I mean, look, you only have like one interpreter here. We have many different languages at Fairmont. We can't afford to lose any kind of funding at our school. Thank you.
Staff, before you, before you call the next caller, our student performers here. So we're going to pause public comment. Our student performer has arrived. So we're going to go back to B seven and have our student performer come up and Mr. Jay, you're going to introduce them?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Go ahead, please.
President, I'm sorry. Do you want us to move to the bottom, to the audience, or do you want us to stay here?
I think, I think we stay here. We listen to her point, and then if she's willing, we'd love to take a picture with her together. So I think we can stay here. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, board, for welcoming us here today. Superintendent Hurst. My name is Jay Urban, and I am the proud principal of Betty Reed Soskin Middle School. Recently, one of our eighth grade students, Demaya, she recited a poem at our promotion. It was, it was absolutely amazing. And when Dr. Keen's great niece came last week, Demaya also recited her poem to Dr. Keen's niece. So we were able to talk to Dr. Hurst and see if she could come do a performance for you today. So I am proud to welcome our student, Ms. Demaya White, and her poem is "Dark Skin is Beautiful."
Hello, I will be performing my poem now. Dark skin is beautiful. Brown skin is me. Light skin is love and no skin is peace. If we came together to make a perfect union, though nothing is perfect, it shall be perfect in the eyes of every skin. Life is beautiful. The life is beautiful. Life is hard. Life is ugly, but the life is yours. Ancestors gave up life so that you may live one. This is mostly look at theirs so that they may live on. History is beautiful. Though history is beautiful, history is hurtful. History scares me, but the history is ours. I do not wish to repeat history. You do not wish to repeat history. History kills, but the present does too. Are we repeating history? Yes, I am asking you. I said, I do not wish to repeat history. So I know why are we still divided, still shocked, still hated, still ripped, still? Maybe history is horrible. Yes, maybe history does kill, but the history is ours. We need to learn our history. Even I think it is worth their while. Though we have grown so much, I feel there's still so much growing to do. Do you feel it too? I hope you do. We all need to feel just how they felt. So we need their power, their strength. They took us so far, but we need to be taken again to an even further place. So far that though we are still learning our history, it seems almost impossible it could be reality. Impossible is where we will all be free, truly free, really free, only free. I'm done. Thanks, Mary.
Ms. White, hang out right there. We're coming to you to take a picture, okay? Thank you so very much for your patience. We are now going to resume public comment. And staff, I believe we were online with the next one.
Our next public comment. It's Mr. Cyrus Tabar. Please unmute yourself.
Hi there. Um, I am, my name is Cyrus Tabar. I'm a parent of a student at Fairmont Elementary. My child, my son Yoshi, he loves going to school there. And I'm here to talk about the proposed budget cuts for next year, Title One. So the district is planning to cut $83,000 from Fairmont's budget, which is a huge 66% reduction. Most of this is because we're losing our Title One status and funding, which is $69,000, even though the needs of our students haven't decreased. Title One funds are super important for the school. They support things like after-school and lunchtime reading and math clubs and online tools, which have been really helpful for students like Yoshi, who really, you know, benefit from that extra help. With the cuts, we'll have to use our reduced site funds and PTA budget to just attempt to cover just a fraction of these critical programs. We're also looking at having fewer site supervisors during lunch and recess, which could mean basically closing the play areas, like what happened two years ago, actually. Plus, we might lose the online tools, like I've said, that teachers use to give more personalized education to the kids. And, you know, that's not all. Counseling services, which are really, really important for our diverse student body. really, really important for our diverse student body, would be cut entirely. Um, these cuts would seriously impact the quality of education and support that my kids like my, my son Yoshi and other students get at Fairmont. So I really hope you can reconsider this decision. Uh, our kids really deserve the best chance to succeed, and that means keeping these essential resources and programs. Uh, thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Ms. Chamberlain, while you approach the podium, audience that's listening on Zoom, we're having poor audio in the room, so when you call on Zoom, please speak louder than normal so we can hear, we're straining to hear you. So people on Zoom, the next four speakers on Zoom, please speak louder than, sorry, next five speakers on Zoom, please speak louder than normal, so we'll make sure we're able to hear you. Thank you, Ms. Chamberlain, for your patience. Go ahead when you're ready, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTTE Local Twenty-One SSA Chapter President. Tonight, I'm congratulating all those dedicated people that have been in our district for many years, have served our schools, our students, our community, and our staff. We have several people retiring, I know within SSA. And one is Carolyn Wendell, one is um, Jim Carnes, I know we also have um, Wanda Stewart, between the three of them, they have over a hundred years of service to the students in our district. So it's amazing. There are also several other people in our school district that are retiring, and I just want to congratulate them and thank them. We have people leaving to seek justice for their families and be with their families. I'm going to miss those people very much. I'm envious. I can't wait to have that opportunity to spend more time with my family and do things such as that. In the meantime, we have lots of work coming forward. School's ended, time to think about twenty-four, twenty-five, for me, at least. So I'm getting out the campaign early. Let's get going. Let's start thinking about the twenty-four, twenty-five and everything we need to move forward. One of those thought processes I'm going to put out there is our forms that we need to fill out. I would love assistance from everybody on the board in getting our educational benefits form done this year. I would love to seek ninety percent completed. So please, let's all get together, have a discussion, have a chat, and really push it out this year, and let's complete those forms. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jason Minton, please unmute yourself.
Hello, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. This is Jason Minton, parent at Pinole Valley High. I'd really like to be there in person, but I'm sick. I'm calling to tell you how I feel disrespected by the district and most of the board by your actions in removing Principal Kibbie Kleiman from Pinole Valley High, and then expelling him from the graduation night immediately after the ceremony ended. I didn't witness this myself, but I was there and heard it from many other parents. I can't believe your whole series of actions around removing Kibbie and how you disrespected the community at every opportunity. But the blatantly rude decision to put Kibbie on administrative leave on graduation night is shocking. Are you still able to hear me, or is it muddy? Am I coming through clearly? I hear, I see a few shakes to the head. Thank you. There's, there's so many steps that you took along this way that were stonewalling, callous, and rude, but the cherry on the top was expelling Kibbie on graduation night, preventing students from meeting and greeting him afterwards, and just cementing your message of disrespect to our community. Is this the leadership you're trying to demonstrate? That you'll prosecute an agenda, roll over public comment, and throw away any appearance of listening? It's just, it's shocking to me. And I just wonder, do, I know in your preamble about title, whatever, you're not allowed to, you say you don't have the, you have the option to not reply, but do you have any reply that you'd like to make to this? Particularly, Dr. Hurst, you were there that night. Jamila, you were there that night. You heard Kibbie's speech. It was not disrespectful to you guys. It wasn't disrespectful to the board. You removed him from this community in the most disrespectful way that you could have. Do you have any reply?
Our next public comment is Rashad Bess.
Good afternoon, my name is Rashad Bess. I am a soon-to-be first-grade parent at Fairmont Elementary School, and I wanted to address the loss of Title One funding for Fairmont. Um, some key facts you may know, Fairmont is the largest elementary school in the district, which is also made up of seventy-nine percent minority students. Um, minority students are discouraged enough outside of the educational system, um, and to deprive them of a sixty-six, sixty-six percent budget cut um, in their school funds could be detrimental for these young students. Um, cutting funds from administrative and central office functions, functions should be at the top of the list before budget cuts for our young minority students at Fairmont Elementary School. Um, our students and, our students, our school, and our children should not have to depend on working primarily middle-class families to volunteer for our kids to use the field during their lunchtime. Our school, our students, and our children should not have a lack of professional school counseling resources. Our school students and children should not have a loss of intervention and pre-intervention services. And our school, our student, and our children should not have fewer enrichment opportunities. As a father that will have three students at Ele- or at Fairmont Elementary School in the next uh, two years, as I have two younger daughters, um, the loss of these funds um, could potentially be a domino effect, and I do not want those lack of services and lack of funding to not only affect my family, my children, um, but their families and children and friends as well. Um, so please, keep in mind, um, again, a lot of these students are minorities and deserve these resources um, and these opportunities. So thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Kay Bowen, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just speak up a little louder, that'd be great.
Oh. Hey, good evening, Honorable Board Members. I am the parent of three kids at Ella Horse Elementary School. I have been a parent for six years there. It is with dismay that I hear that the board has voted for Mr. Hiller for the principal. We already have a wonderful principal. There was no wrongdoing found after a recent incident, and yet the board members are reassigning a new principal without the community input. As a board member of the PTA the past four years and upcoming PTA president for next year, I have witnessed the following about Mr. Whaling. He's a caring individual who supports the students' social emotional, social, emotional, and academic growth. And he supports the professional development of the teachers and staff, and consistently attends every PTA meeting to support the parents and guardians of all the elementary school students. He has worked tirelessly to ensure the safe reopening of the schools during the COVID years and transitioning back, being transparent every step of the way. So he has worked diligently to establish these great relationships and trust and established that took a lot of effort and time. Um, what is best for my family and the parent guardian community is for Mr. Whaling to be reassigned and continue to lead Ella Horse Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Anna Chavez.
Hi, I'm here again from Highland Elementary School to discuss the safety of the school. Um, as I've let you guys know in the past, the school is not safe. People are getting sick. They're having respiratory problems, chest pains, and rashes. My classroom was moved to a portable, and all of my students got better. Their eyes stopped burning, their rashes went away, and their respiratory problems went away. The community deserves to see the VOC uh, results from the report, the VOCs, and we have not gotten them yet. We were told we would be able to see them, but we have not seen them as of yet. I'm urging you guys to get some portables up there and get the students out of the building, because painting the inside of the building is not going to make it safe. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Andrew Shane, please unmute yourself.
Uh, hello, Dr. Hurst, I'm board members. My name is Andrew Shane. I'm a parent of two students at Fairmont Elementary, McCune and Ruby. I am deeply concerned about the eighty-three thousand dollar budget cut posed for our school next year, due in large part to the loss of our Title One funding as proposed. I want to highlight that my daughter, Ruby, is struggling to learn math and already had an uncredible teacher due to the variability of staff to the school. Our school is deeply under-resourced, and I can't imagine how my child and her fellow students will be affected by these cuts. Our teachers are heroes, obviously, but they are getting by despite having too little. What does less look like? As Gina mentioned previously, we have over thirty languages spoken at the school. We have a hundred and six special education students who come to our school from across the district. We're barely getting by with the access to essential services, and our teachers are going to lose funding for basics like classroom materials and professional development. We're talking about the loss of the site supervisor who is doing her best to prevent bullying. My children are already afraid to use the bathrooms, let alone navigating the spilled food and the issues that have been spoken to about us as the parents who have the means to volunteer uh, on a regular basis. Uh, we're barely making ends meet here. The school garden, I can't tell you how many families are first-generation Americans with limited English proficiency. Parents can't read the materials to come home. These are families that are barely making it by right now. We have kids who live blocked from the bay, but have never seen the water. Losing subsidized field trips is a real cost to these children's future. We ask you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Alexis Mizoli, please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Alexis Mizoli. I'm going to be reading for a teacher at Fairmont Elementary School. My students will no longer receive enough supervision on the yards and structures during recesses and lunches, counseling services in school field trips, assemblies, art and music teachers, and online resources that need paid licenses. Also, teachers will not have enough supplies for teaching the students. This means staff and students will no longer have adequate amounts of paper for academics or artwork, pencils, crayons, markers, glue sticks, basic cleaning supplies, toilet paper, paper towels, hand sanitizers, and soap. This was from Rachel Como. She's a kindergarten teacher at Fairmont Elementary. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, okay, I was having tech- technical difficulties. So also, no board, y'all are competing with the NBA Finals Game Three. All right, so with that being said, it's the end of the year. Y'all know how I feel about my kids, and I have to say that I did learn and grow this year. I taught an MMSN history class, so those students are not earning a diploma, they are earning a certificate. And they learned a lot, but I truly learned a lot, and I appreciate them stretching themselves, because I treat, I treat them like they're earning a diploma. And in the end, they gave um, pub, they gave, uh, let me see, they spoke about their state. Everybody had a state to investigate and learn about and all of that, so at the end of the year, um, they gave uh, everybody the background on their state, so I really appreciate them doing it, trying. One kid had to sit next to me and read from their paper, but I say, hey, the point is that you did it. Second of all, um, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to meet our US Senator Lofanza Butler, who was appointed by Governor Newsom after Senator Diane Feinstein passed away. And so I was talking with her, because some of y'all know me, I'm just gonna walk up and say, hey, my name is. And so, um, when she found out I was a teacher, she said, where's your phone? I'm gonna make a video to your kids. And so she made a video, I played it for all of my students on the last day of school, and they were like, Ms. Gash, you really do be talking about us. Ms. Gash, you mean some of the coolest people. And part of my point in sharing that is that I told them, no matter who it is, you walk up to people, you introduce yourself, you shake their hand firmly, and Dr. Hurst, you can attest to that, because whenever you've been on campus, I'm like, y'all go up and introduce yourself to your superintendent. Hi, my name is, look them in the eye, have a firm handshake. Because I tell them, you never know where you're gonna find yourself in life, and I want you to be prepared and confident, no matter what or what position somebody holds. So everybody have a wonderful summer. Until next time.
Our next public comment is Don Gosney. Mr. Don Gosney.
Good evening. I know you've already mentioned it, but just in case you don't really fully understand, we can't hear a dang thing that's coming over the Zoom. It is so inaudible. It's, it's like they don't even exist. I've got it turned on to my, my laptop, and some of the people said, turn it up, turn it up. I said, I can't, because I know I'll be shut down. Just letting you know. They don't exist as far as the people in the audience are concerned. But my name is Don Gosney. I serve on the CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, as well as the Seven-Eleven Committees. From time to time, through the board, the district embeds consultants at the various committees, meetings to help us out. As the recipient of the help offered by some of these consultants, I ask that you ask yourselves whether these consultants actually bring value to the committees. Are they welcomed by the members of the committees? Are they disruptive to the committees? How much of the committee's time do they demand? And do they prevent the committees from actually doing the work the committee is supposed to be doing? If these questions can't be answered in the affirmative, perhaps you should reconsider forcing them on the well-intentioned volunteers stepping forward to help out. Because the bottom line is, how many more committee members can you afford to alienate and lose? Don't forget that these consultants are an extension of the board. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pedro Ruiz, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, my name is Pedro Ruiz. I'm a Richmond High School graduate, class of twenty-twenty-four. And I speak on sort of the behalf of several UTR members and students of Richmond, El Cerrito and Kennedy High School, with whom I've actually collaborated on devising and proposing necessary amendments to the proposed twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five WCCUSD budget. And we just want to express our sort of concerns for not just a particular issue within the mere budget, but a much broader one, of course. And by that, I just wanted to say that the district has basically failed to comply with the requests propounded by our teachers, which is also exemplified by the failure to create and implement a budgetary plan at the start of the academic year, despite the repeated urgings and demands from not just the, the UTR, but teachers overall throughout our district. And furthermore, the district fails to actively hire qualified personnel who are necessary to manage the district's budget and finances. And in addition, their failure to proactively develop and adhere to a well-planned budget at the start of the academic year is worsened by their heedless expenditures and contracts. And as this, uh, as this catastrophic fiscal situation has become, or has been recurring throughout extensive history, this is without a doubt an urgent priority that must be addressed before, that must be addressed. And by that, we urge the district to take more progressive action to demonstrate their professional capacities into better managing our financing, our finances, funding, and expenditures as to adhere to, of course, a and expenditures as to adhere to, of course, a well-planned and effective budget. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Christine Rinkie.
Thank you. My name is Christine Rinkie, and I'm the parent of a rising second and fifth grader at Fairmont Elementary School. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our four hundred, over four hundred Fairmont caregivers and supporters who have said that the sixty-six percent budget cut, a reduction of eighty-three thousand dollars, is unfair, wrong, and undermines the education of our students with the greatest needs. I want to share with you some of the impacts that this will have on our community. A common theme in our SSC and PTA meetings recently with school staff and parents is the lack of funds to provide basic classroom supplies next year. We are literally talking about whether the TK and Kinder classrooms will have enough toilet paper and crayons to make it through the year. Without additional funding, they will not. One mom of a child who received special education services at Fairmont shared her deep discouragement with the District. Her child relies on many of the services provided by Title I and LCAP funds, and she's considering homeschooling her child next year as a result of the loss of services. Discussions within Fairmont's LGBTQ community have focused on reduced recess supervision. Our kids still deal with mistreatment because they have queer parents or themselves are queer, trans, or gender non-conforming, and we have real safety concerns for next year. I've heard really good stories too about the work that the teachers are doing, and we will hear more about those tonight. But I know that I'm privileged here, speaking on behalf of our school, but for many of our families, it's too hard to show up to a meeting where you don't speak the language. It's too hard to take time away from childcare and work, to find a ride or to pay gas to get here, and to show up at a long day after a long day of school. But that's why we created the petition for about over four hundred of our parents signed, and they are here with us in spirit tonight. So I ask you, the Board.
Please include your comment.
Yes. Please ensure that all of the schools that have lost their Title I status this year receive extra funding in the budget or vote it down. Thank you.
Our next public comment is iPhone. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sandra Soto, and I'm here talking regarding about the DOLI program at Stewart Elementary in Pinole. Just about a month ago, we heard that there are budget cuts and that they're going to be cutting our, the funds to promote our program, which is very, it's great for our kids. They're learning both languages. And so about a month ago, I went in person and a bunch of parents got together, and we were able to pull together and get the kindergarten because they had said it was gonna get cut off because of low enrollments. So now we, all the parents got together, we were able to recruit kids. And thankfully, now the kindergarten is still back on track. But now we are still struggling because now they are telling us that they're going to be combining grade first, second, and second and third. And I just think it's really, um, it's really a bad situation for our children to get split up. Especially for my child, who will be split up from his cold heart that he's been with since kindergarten. Since my child has started kindergarten at Stewart Elementary, the DOLI, the numbers, they didn't have a teacher for the kindergarten. So then all these kids got split up with different class, different class grades. And because of that situation, we are not now in this predicament because my child's class is, has a low number of enrollments. And because of that situation, we are now in this predicament that my son's class is gonna get split up. And that is just very unfair because since the beginning, we have been struggling. And also, when he went into the first grade, the teacher left. Luckily, they were able to find a teacher that came from an international teacher for the first grade. And then it was a nice, smooth transition. But now we are hearing that now my child that'll be going to the second grade is going to be split up, and that is just not fair for them. We just want them to be together. We want you to think about the children. This is about the children, their education. You cannot do this to them.
Our next public speaker is Awnish Kadak.
Hello. Hi, dear respected principal, dear respected board members, respected teachers, and respected parents. I'm glad to coming here, especially thanks to Ms. Anna Chavez. So my name is Awnish Kharka, and I'm a parent of Highland Elementary School. I have just one question about the school because my son, my son is studying in grade fourth and grade first. Now they're going to second grade and fifth grade. I have only one problem because they're always going to school every, every week. Every week, they are sick because of sometime they have in rashes in hand, and sometimes they are coughing every time. And then I went to the doctor, and then the doctor says just the allergy. And then I heard about the school, there is something problem in the room. Already Ms. Chavez told here, that's why please be, pay attention about that problem. Thank you. I have that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Sandy Davis.
Hello, I'm Sandy Davis. I'm here to speak about the Fairmont budget cuts, which I believe are very drastic and also unexpected. Drastic because it is two-thirds of our budget and unexpected because our student population and our student needs haven't changed. I have a student who will be going into fourth grade, and I also have a student who just finished sixth grade and has been there since kindergarten. He had some learning struggles and they were identified right before the pandemic. And then when we were back in the classroom after the pandemic, it was almost a full school year before we could have those addressed. And not because of any lack of will or lack of concern on behalf of the teachers or staff, but simply because there weren't the resources available. So I'd just like to echo what the others' parents have said, that there is a lot of need at our school, and I do feel that these cuts are unconscionable. With my remaining time, I'd like to read a comment from one of our teachers, our second-grade teacher, Ms. DuVost, about how these cuts will affect her. "The funding we lost is used to pay for teachers to work with intervention groups after school. These intervention groups are critically important for students to make academic growth. They often serve our large population of English-language learners and financially disadvantaged students who cannot afford tutoring elsewhere. Also, taking away our Title I funding would mean we no longer qualify for a number of field trip opportunities that are an important way for us to provide out of the classroom hands-on experiences for our students." Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good, thank you. I'm out hugging you. So two things real quick. I'm a teacher, a fifth-grade teacher at Shannon Elementary in Pinole. First issue, I wanted to point out an item in the, in the consent calendar today for the contracts. It's for a lot of money, sixty thousand dollars, I think, for some banners. It's community schools money, and it, reading it, it looks kind of like a lot of money for something that's not that great. Second thing, I spoke on earlier this week for about forty-five minutes to Dr. Schilkott, who is the Director of Kirkland Assessment, I believe. We had a very productive conversation. I expressed my concerns about the inordinate amount of time that elementary school students spend on testing, particularly now that we use iReady. It takes hours and hours, and I feel like I'm being cruel to my students when I put them through that, especially if it's in late May, right after S-Back. Something has got to be done. This is the second year we've done this because Shannon piloted the program a year ago. And so this is our second time going through the, through this issue where I have hard-working, intelligent students who, because they are hard-working and intelligent, get harder and harder questions and spend hours and hours and hours taking an assessment at the end of the school year. And it's just, it's just not fair. It's just not right, and it's got to be changed. You should see what students go through at the end of the year. They have, they have S-Back. If they're a fifth grader, they have the science test, also the state science test. They have the school state PE test, then they have Healthy Kids Survey, and now iReady Math and iReady Reading. It takes forever. It's just not fair to the students, and I hope you do something to modify the calendar for next year or shorten the test or something to make that happen. Dr. Schilkott and I had a good discussion, and I hope you hear from me. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nisa Bremer.
I'm here, as you know, from Fairmont Elementary. It's good to see you all again. This is my fourth time speaking in front of you. I'm not going to repeat it. You guys know why we're here. Our site budget has been slashed by a very large amount over the change in our free and reduced lunch number by one tenth of a percent, again, one half a child. I wanted to just say personally, since this is my fourth time being with you all, I've also been in board meetings for the entire duration of my child's time at Fairmont, so four years. I have been on the PTA, served as the PTA president. I'm an active volunteer at school, and I'm very privileged to be a part of his education and be able to volunteer and be a part of it, as are all these folks that you see here. But I am more privileged to send my son to Fairmont, which is a school where thirty languages are spoken by our families. It's one of the most diverse schools in our entire district. And not only are our students who are, all those students that are speaking those different languages, that's thirty percent of our population, which is English learners, which means they go home to English learning and multicultural families. Additionally, our school is a full-inclusion elementary, so that means that special-needs children learn alongside all of their classmates. That's particularly important to me because as the mother of an autistic child, this year he has been able to attend a program at lunchtime called Lunch Bunch when he's feeling extra sensory. So that's been something that's important to me. We see every day how these, how these interventions help the students at our school who need them. As a reminder, our school is in El Cerrito, but we are a Title I school. This is very important that we go back to revisit this and look at the over two-hundred-and-fifty students at our school that are free and reduced lunch. That's more than fourteen of the schools, other schools in the district receiving Title I funding. Please do not pass this budget. Go back and revisit these numbers. Ask Dr. Hurst to make a different plan. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Schiff. David?
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. I just, I'm also here about the cuts to the Fairmont site budget. I, just, it affects me very personally, or at least my family, because children are so stupid, and my child does a lot of really dumb stuff. All the kids do, and it just feels like they need to run around and they need to get that energy out. And we have volunteered during the lunch hour and the recess, and the time is so important. And the idea that there would be less supervision or a smaller area for them to play in is just terrifying. The impact that could have on them, and it just feels, you know, short-sighted. So I know there's many things that you guys have to consider and weigh and balance here. So I really just ask that, like, is the most wise decision being made? And are all of these impacts being considered? Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Steven Chloia.
Good evening, board members. My name is Steven Chalowick, and I'm a deeply concerned parent, as are all of us, of two Fairmont Elementary students. I'm here today to urge you to reject the devastating proposed budget cuts to Fairmont's Title I and local council funding and to consider the implications for our community at large. As the second-largest elementary school in the district with over seventy-nine percent minority students and thirty percent English-language learners, our diverse community has complex needs. Yet, we are facing a sixty-six percent cut to our site budget, including the entire loss of our Title I funding. This is really just, it's unacceptable. These cuts will directly harm our children. Teacher intervention hours will be slashed, leaving our struggling students with less support. As you've heard, recess staffing will be reduced, potentially creating unsafe conditions for our children. And critically-needed counseling services will disappear. I understand the District is facing financial challenges, but cutting Fairmont's school site funds by over twenty-five percent while increasing funding for the elementary school support program, a program that wasn't fully implemented, ran significantly under budget, and is taking school funds away that directly improves school achievement, is simply illogical. Why prioritize a program that hasn't proven its effectiveness over the direct needs of our children? I implore you to reconsider this short-sighted decision. Our students and our diverse community deserve better. Please reallocate funds to restore Fairmont's budget, ensuring our children receive the support they need to thrive. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jesse Spears.
Good afternoon. I want to acknowledge the hard work that everyone in this room is doing on preparing the budget, doing everything, but we have to go back to the drawing board and reevaluate the budget. I'm in the Fairmont Elementary crew. I've got two daughters enrolled there. And I understand we all have to tighten our belts. We've got to make some, some cuts in order to pass, you know, have a balanced budget. However, going zeroing out Title I is not the way. And I understand from, Dr. Hurst, I understand completely. You're looking at the numbers from like a thousand miles away. It looks like it all adds up. You see a drop in the free and reduced lunch participation, and you say, oh, everything's okay. That school's, I guess everyone pulled themselves up by their bootstraps. They're all doing better. I can zero out that Title I, but that's not reflective of reality. What happened was that we faced a ten percent drop in our free and reduced-price meals for Fairmont Elementary. Now, someone could say, oh, maybe everyone just got richer and they're better, but that's not the case. What happened was you don't have to sign up on the form in order to get your free lunch. So we found that a lot of, a lot of folks, they're busy. The form is written in English and Spanish, but not in the, the main languages that we need. So for example, we have, here we are. We've got Arabic, Portuguese, Nepali, and Urdu speakers. We've got Arabic, Portuguese, Nepali, and Urdu speakers comprising a large, a large amount of our student population. Now, if they can't read the form, they're not going to fill it out. If they don't have to fill out the form, they're not gonna, because they're, they're all living busy lives. They're working extra jobs. Now, as a chaperone on field trips, I know that we need them. I know they need the food, because I see kids grabbing extra lunches to take home for dinner. I know it's real. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Sledge.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Jeffrey Sledge. Like a lot of people here, I'm talking about the proposed Fairmont budget cuts. A lot of people here, they know a lot more about the details of what's going on and why. But I want to tell a few stories about why I think it's so important that this is turned down. The first day I was at Fairmont, I was there because my daughter was in the overflow class because the school is too crowded. There was another boy in the overflow class and his mom was there to fight him to get his kid in the school. She was a single mom. She had three kids. And she was living in a shelter. She's the kind of mom who doesn't have time to come to a school board meeting. She, the school was trying to route her third kid to another school. And I tried to comfort her saying, that's a pretty good school. And she told me, I don't want my kids going to that school. We tried it. People looked down on my kids there. She only felt accepted at Fairmont. The funding we're losing is supposed to help families like hers. One more story. One day I was at work, I got a phone call. And they had told me that someone on the schoolyard had grabbed my son and choked him. So I did what any father did. I raced over. I picked him up and said, are you okay? And he said, yeah, I'm okay. He was fine. And he felt fine going to school the next day. And I felt safe sending him there. Why? Because we had people on the schoolyard watching out for his welfare and, and, and health. And we had people in the schoolyard checking in on the kids who were having emotional outbursts. If we lose this funding, we lose those people in the schoolyard. What would have happened in that situation, had we had lost that money then? Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Sarah Menanix.
Hi, my name is Sarah Menanix. I'm a parent at Fairmont Elementary School and I'm back again to ask you to please reject the district's proposed budget unless they reinstate the school site funds or even a portion of the Title I funding to Fairmont Elementary. With this budget, the district is proposing slashing Fairmont's site budget by eighty-three thousand dollars, as you've heard. Federally, a school is eligible for Title I funding if they have at least forty percent or more students who qualify for free or reduced price meals. But as you know, our district has chosen to set their threshold at fifty percent. Last year, Fairmont received Title I status and funding. This funding has been absolutely critical for supporting our many students who are at risk of failing and for keeping our students safe on the yard. I spent every Monday last year voluntarily teaching math to a select group of second graders and running a lunchtime math club for first through third graders at Fairmont. I have firsthand seen the vast differences in both math and reading achievement among our students and how pivotal, how pivotal our Title I funded after-school intervention programs are for ensuring many of our students are able to keep up with the pace of the grade level standards. In some, in the same second grade classroom, I've observed many students who still add single-digit numbers on their fingers and those who are ready for multiplication and pre-algebra. Trying to differentiate curriculum for this population without any additional funding or resources is too big of an ask for our teachers and it's not fair for our students. I recognize that our sites' free and reduced price percent, forty-two, five point two percent, is lower than many other schools in this district. That being said, our percent is much higher than most of the other schools who do not have Title I status. Fairmont is unique in this way. Fairmont's also unique in that we have over thirty languages spoken. Taking those numbers at face value, though, looking at sheer numbers, not percents, Fairmont has more low-income students than fourteen other schools who will receive Title I funding. Yet those same students are set to receive no support. As a board, you say you care about student achievement and safety and that you listen to parent voices. So show us that you do by rejecting this budget.
Our next public comment is Jen Douglas.
He's been waiting. Hi, my name is Jen Douglas. I am the mother of a graduated kindergartner, upcoming first grader, and then this guy is going to be a Fairmont student as well, pretty soon. You've heard from me a lot over Zoom, but today I'm here to read something from our, one of our teachers. This is Ms. Kelso, a third grade teacher and also the student success team co-coordinator. As the SST teacher coordinator in charge of helping all students get the extra help that they need to make it to grade level, these cuts are devastating. We don't have an intervention teacher dedicated to closing this achievement gap thanks to previous mismanagement of district level funding. Instead, many teachers do after-school interventions with students. That funding will be lost with these cuts. This means that we have virtually no extra ability to help get those kids to grade level. We have five hundred and thirty-three students. In my tenure in this unpaid position, we have held over two hundred and twenty SST meetings. Here at Fairmont, we do not just talk about closing the achievement gap. We work hard to actually close it. When a student needs extra help, the after-school programs are a huge way we can help them. With this money being cut, we will overload the classroom teachers and our RSP teacher who is already doing two full-time jobs. For a district that talks about equity, this is sure going against that sentiment. Jennifer Kelso, third grade teacher and student success team co-coordinator. As a parent, it's not only concerning about the academics, but also as many of my friends have talked about, the supervision on the schoolyard. So I've been one of the parents who's rearranged their work schedule to try and be there on the schoolyard for lunch. And there is chaos involved. And so keeping our babies safe and having them have a really positive experience at school. I've had my daughter experience, you know, some negative things on the schoolyard, but the folks who are very kindly there, who we will lose, have been wonderful at managing it. And so we will really, really feel that loss. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next public comment is Lucas Menanix. Excuse me for one second. Before you start, ma'am, could you tell me the name of that baby?
It's Julian. Julian, he's thirty weeks old.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Julian, for being here. And thank you for bringing him. Thank you.
Fun fact, they're all J names in their family. So. Oh, my name is Lucas Menanix. I am a parent of a rising first grader and a rising third grader at Fairmont Elementary. I'm also the chair of our school site council, as well as the chair of our, of our district DL caps as well. So as you know well now, Fairmont Elementary is facing sixty-six percent budget cut, which equates to eighty-three thousand dollars. My fellow parents have spoke quite eloquently about what that impact means and what it means to student achievement. There is no other organization in the world that could take a sixty-six percent budget cut and be expected to perform at the same level. But that is what you, that is what you're asking us to do now. You're asking us to perform at the same level with so much less than we had last year. That just doesn't make sense. And no organization in the world could actually survive that. But we're, we're going to do it no matter what, because as you can see, we have a strong community here. As a board, you claim to care about student achievement, community voice, and anti-racism. We've come here now for the fourth time because we have heard nothing back from the district about how to address these large budget cuts that we're facing. And we will continue coming back and keep coming back until they are addressed. If you, as a board, really care about community voice, care about student achievement, there's only one step in my, in my view of what to do next, is to reject this budget until it reflects your values, your values of student achievement, community voice, and anti-racism. Because as other folks have said, we are a school of seventy-nine percent minority enrollment. So this is the work. This is the anti-racism work, to work with the district to figure out how to retain the resources that our school needs to achieve. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Rochelle Morrissey.
Hello. My name is Rochelle Morrissey. I'm the parent of two children who are at West County Mandarin School. Like all the other parents who've spoken, I'm very concerned about the cuts to our district budget and the impact it's going to have on our students. I was at the board, the meetings that Dr. Hurst and the school board held about the budget in January. And when we spoke then, all of the parents were saying the same things we are now. Our school is our, our schools are already on fire. We cannot sustain further budget cuts without having effects on our students' learning. Particularly, we are concerned about the cuts for DLI and IB and how it affects student learning and the viability of these programs. It's not clear to us from looking at the budget and the online agenda whether there's going to be additional cuts to DLI and IB. We have also learned from the DLI PAC that the funding for the DLI programs is closely tied to ELAC funding. If our district's goal is to celebrate diversity and encourage students to become proficient in other languages beyond English, then there should be funding for DLI programs as a separate entity or an equal entity in funding compared to the ELAC programs that exist. This, this, the way this is funding means that there's a discrepancy in the DLI program's success because there's inequity in funding them, the way the district is currently has its, has it set up. Revisiting how these programs are funded would help them become more equitable and accessible to the families who desire them and support them and keep more families in the district. Additionally, speaking about WCMS, our school is about to be the first, and I think one of the only K-8 school, I think the only K-8 school in the district split across two sites. We want to know that the district is going to honor the promises that we had made to us in the past with Dr. Hurst and the executive board about the funding that we need to make this two-site model workable and safe for all of our students. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pliff. Please unmute yourself. Yes, we can.
Hello. I'm a Fairmont parent and we are requesting the reinstatement of our Title I funding that is set to be cut next year. This funding provides critical reading licenses for our teachers that have improved reading scores for our kids. It also keeps our kids safe on the playground by funding the AIDS and individual interventionists for at-risk kids. Please consider that Fairmont has over two hundred and fifty low-income kids who rely upon these resources to level the playing field for their, for their education. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Sarah McIntyre. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Sarah McIntyre, and I'm a parent, parent also of a Fairmont Elementary School child. I'm here tonight to request that Fairmont not be stripped of its Title I status next school year. That would result in a sixty-six budget, percent budget cut from the school that is barely making do with the current budget. And losing Title I status would have an even bigger impact on Fairmont's funding and services, since Title I status qualifies Fairmont to receive a range of other resources, such as free or discounted field trips, programs, and grants. And losing these funds would mean reduced site supervision during staff, staff during lunch and recess, which honestly is already at a bare minimum and is really important, as many others have said, for our kids' safety, especially at the second largest elementary school in the district. This could also mean having to close the field, which is the only green space in what is otherwise, otherwise a wide-open, hot concrete area. And this is in light of the fact that the needs of our Fairmont kids have not decreased. Fairmont should not lose its Title I status just because our percent of students registered as receiving free reduced lunch dropped by point one percent, half a child. And as others have mentioned, that's perhaps due to the thirty languages spoken by Fairmont and the lack of translation on the form. So that undercounts even that metric. Additionally, as the second largest elementary school, Fairmont has even more students with low incomes than fourteen other schools in the district that will retain their Title I status. And unduplicated count of students who qualify for free lunch, or English learners, or are in foster care remains at sixty percent. And twenty percent of our kids are in special education programs from across the district. It is within the board's authority to retain Fairmont's Title I status. So I plead you for you to reinstate that and not strip these Fairmont children of pivotal interventions for our most struggling students. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. We are now moving to agenda item B nine, and those are our standing reports. Staff, do we have members of our standing report here tonight? Yes, we have our MDAC representatives.
Muy buenas tardes, superintendente, gabinete, y estimados miembros de la junta directiva. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría facilitar a todas las familias. Okay. Do you need to say something?
Just one second. Can I tell everyone here in the public this? She's going to talk in Spanish. So if you need headsets, we have headsets back there, so you could hear in English. So please come back here if, in the booth, if you need English translation. Thank you.
And President, may, may we restart?
Can you start the time, please?
Absolutely. We're going to wait to see if anyone's going to grab the headsets first. And then, once they do, we will absolutely restart your time. So give us about one and a half seconds.
Perfect. For Zoom, you change the portolation to the Spanish for English.
Thank you, everybody.
Hold on one more second, Fran.
Ready?
Ready, Fran. You're good to go.
Buenas tardes a todos, superintendente, gabinete, y estimados miembros de la junta directiva. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría felicitar a todas las familias cuyos hijos han tenido la oportunidad de reclasificarse en el año veintitrés, veinticuatro aproximadamente. Más de mil estudiantes lograron este importante logro. Cada uno de los estudiantes cumplieron con los requisitos de aprobar el ELPAC, exámenes de iReady, la aprobación de su maestro y la aprobación de los padres para ser reclasificados. Quiero agradecer al equipo de ELMA que por su gran trabajo y apoyo, a pesar de ser un equipo pequeño, han logrado un impacto significativo en nuestras familias del distrito de West Contra Costa. Así que junto con mi compañera Stephanie, hemos distribuido copias a todas las recomendaciones de Lenda para su revisión. Solicitamos una respuesta formal por escrito de ustedes, del superintendente, con respecto a la adopción de nuestras recomendaciones. Quisiera proporcionar una actualización sobre el informe de fin de año para nuestras reuniones de Lendak durante este año académico veintitrés, veinticuatro. Es importante señalar que los sitios escolares deben de revisar y aprobar sus SPSA en las reuniones finales del SSI. Sin embargo, nos han llamado la atención que no todas las escuelas han tenido sus HILACS activos. Esto genera preocupaciones acerca de cómo las escuelas están asegurando el cumplimiento de las regularizaciones. Según la ley, las escuelas deberían haber presentado sus presupuestos a sus HILACS para las recomendaciones antes de la aprobación final de sus SSI. Es esencial considerar cuántos padres que firman el SPSA en nombre de sus HILACS son padres de estudiantes clasificados ILL. Es importante verificar esta información ya que en algunas escuelas han pedido a los padres que firmen, a pesar de que sus hijos ya no son considerados estudiantes ILL, siendo esto un estudiante reclasificado por más de cuatro años. Como es del conocimiento común, la financiación se asigna al distrito a través de diversas fuentes. Nuestro objetivo es difundir esta información a los HILACS a cada una de las escuelas, colaborar en el análisis de datos garantizados de los fondos, se utilizan eficazmente para apoyar a todos nuestros estudiantes, en particular a los ILL. Recibimos fondos suplementarios y concentración para mejorar los servicios, para mejorar los servicios para los estudiantes. para mejorar los servicios para los estudiantes no demandados incluidos los ILL, así como los financiamiento del Título III en las escuelas comunitarias en ciertos sitios. Estos recursos están destinados a promover el éxito de los estudiantes. Somos conscientes que el Hueso Contra Costa se esfuerza por promover una cultura para poder compartir y tomar la decisión colaborativa con estudiantes y familias. Sin embargo, es evidente que nuestro distrito se enfrenta actualmente a desafíos en este sentido. Es necesario mejorar la facilitación de la colaboración significativa y la participación de los principales interesados, como los estudiantes y las familias, en los procesos de adopción de decisiones, reconociendo la importancia de contribuir comunidades escolares fuertes mediante la colaboración. Hemos encontrado varios obstáculos que obstaculizan nuestro progreso hacia este objetivo. Estamos interesados en comprender la implementación y supervisión de las recomendaciones para nuestros estudiantes de inglés, incluyendo a las personas responsables de proporcionar apoyo y capacitaciones. También estamos tratando de garantizar que el desarrollo profesional PD sea obligatorio si es posible para todos los profesores, con mecanismo para rastrear la asistencia y monitorear el impacto de los resultados de los estudiantes. Además, buscamos aclaraciones sobre cómo está recopilando y analizando los datos para demostrar la eficaz del uso de los fondos del Plan Local Control y Radicación de las Cuentas de la ELCA por sus siglas en inglés para aumentar el éxito de nuestros estudiantes. Las recomendaciones son las siguientes, son cuatro. Utilicen, que utilicen el ELPA proporcionar como herramienta de monitorización de progreso para los ILD. Los grados de tres a doceavo que se comparte y revisa durante la conferencia de padres y maestros para formar los próximos pasos, intervención, instrucción. Crear y monitorear los objetivos de ILD de los estudiantes del inglés para que los estudiantes que no están en el camino hacia su reclasificación, específicamente para los estudiantes de riesgo de LTL. Coordinar el apoyo adecuado para IELT con el IAP y los apoyos incluyen evaluaciones, objetivos lingüísticos, tecnológicos. El PD se dará, se dará tanto en persona a los, a nuestros estudiantes como SPIL y las familias cuando correspondan.
Thank you. Gracias a todos.
Our next standing report is Musa Lon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. ASAP won't be doing a full report tonight. I'm sick, so I thought I was going to have someone come in, so we'll be picking up at our next one. I apologize for that because I'm not feeling well tonight. I'm complete.
That concludes standing reports.
Thank you very much. Board, we are now going to move to Agenda Item B10, Agenda Review and Adoption. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is now adopted. We are now moving to B11, Approval of Minutes, May 1st and May 8th. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, the minutes are now adopted. We are now moving to Agenda Item B12, Recognition of Student Board Trustees for Their Participation. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Even though Student Trustee Abdughar, Abdugharparov is not here, I wanted to share with you just a little bit about her. You know that she was a Student Board Trustee, but she was involved in so much more throughout her ninth and 10th grade year. She'll be an 11th grader next year. She was in the All-Student Congress as an organizer, statewide student fellow. She was an intern for the Asian Pacific Environmental Network, Gaming Club Vice President, a part of Mesa, Lawrence Hall of Science Internship Student Athlete, Hercules High School Tracking Field Cross Country. And she did all of this and maintains a GPA of 4.3. And I want to just share with her, even though she's not here, she's listening. We want to thank you, student Lola Abdugharparov, for your service as a Student Board Trustee. And we also thank you for your advocacy for students across WCCUSD. We do have a plaque for her. I'm going to hold it up for the audience to see. It reads, "Presented to the Student Trustee, Student Board Representative, Spring Semester 2024 in recognition of your leadership and service to the students of West Contra Costa Unified School District." Here it is, everyone. Can we give her a round of applause even though she's not here? And we do have our Student Board Trustee here, Camille Paukar. And I'll share this with you about her. She is very disciplined. She's goal-oriented. She's a hard worker inside and outside of the classroom. And she too has been involved in a lot of activities. So we all know she's been a Student Board Trustee, but she's also been the lead prosecution attorney in mock trials. She's been part of the school site council, senior class representative, All-Student Congress Student Trustee, College Israel Ambassador, Advocacy Planning Team Student Planner, Multilingual Representative and Leadership, Founder and President of Climate Control, President of the Latino Student Union, Vice President and Co-Founder of the Astronomy Club, Treasurer, Mock Trial Club, Writer in the Journalism Club. And she did all of that and maintained a 9 through 12 unwed GPA of 4.516 and a class ranking of number one out of 317. She was a class valedictorian. Can we give her a big round of applause, please? And we too would like to say thank you for your service as a Student Board Trustee and thank you for your advocacy for our students across WCCUSD. Can you come and receive your plaque, please?
Board members, you have the opportunity to say something to our Student Trustee that is present. Anyone like to go first? Let's go just around in a circle. Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Sure, so to both Student Trustees, thank you very much for your participation and being here. You were here almost every meeting and your comments were always thoughtful and talked about what the experience is like on the ground. I really appreciate both of you. And I watched you grow over the semester. You started out quiet and as the semester moved on, I saw you gain your voice and really rise to the occasion. The other thing I'd like to say is congratulations on being a valedictorian that requires a level of detail that few, few, few have the stick-to-it-ness to make it. So really, congratulations to you, that's remarkable. And I'm going to give you my card, stay in touch and all the best to you, thank you.
Sorry, thank you so much, Trustee Christian, then Clerk Gonzalez-Lloyd. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say to our Student Trustee, thank you so much. You brought life to the board and appreciate all the questions, all the things you ask while you was here, I mean, being here and, and all of your accomplishments. You're doing a lot. So stay focused, keep moving, and continue to accomplish your goals. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Trustee Christian. Clerk Gonzalez-Lloyd.
Thank you, President. To both Student Trustees, thank you so much for your time. Hold on, sorry, I'm going to wait for a second. To Trustee Paukar, I want to thank you for everything that you brought to the board. Your time was very powerful. And you are just such an incredible and talented individual. And as Dr. Hurst was reading the list of things that you are doing, I mean, I don't know how you're doing it. I thought I was busy, like now I feel like I can't complain compared to you. And your speech at the graduation was one of the best speeches I've heard. I was going to say student, but honestly, anyone perform. And you did it in such an amazing way, like I was just incredibly impressed by you. And so are you going to UCLA? Is that where you're going? Go Bruins. And, you know, Dr. Hurst went to USC, so that's why he's making that face. So congratulations. And I'm really happy for you since you're not going to USC as well. No, I'm just kidding, but congratulations, it's a great school. You're going to do great things and come back, run for one of our seats, win and change the district for the better as you continue to advocate. So thank you so much.
I want to tell you that, and you're going to get to say something too, I promise. I want to tell you that you were an amazing Student Trustee. Your list of accomplishments is just out of this world. Also want to tell you that the use of your voice has been so powerful and you turned up the volume for the students in this district and they were heard because of your steadfastness and the way that you approached this position. You did it with integrity, you did it with character, you did it with honesty, and you did it with steadfastness. So please give yourself a pat on the back and don't lose that when you go off to college. Continue to turn up the volume on voices that are intentionally muted by the system. Also, I want to tell you to slow down a little bit. You're not 45, you don't have to do everything right away. Take your time, ease into it because there's a lot going on and I don't want you to be burnt out because we need you in this system. We need you at national levels. So I look forward to seeing what you are going to do. And I'm very excited that your mom works in the district because it shows that we not only produce amazing students, but we hire really, really, really quality employees. So thank you to your entire family and what you do. Go ahead, ma'am, you have the microphone.
Oh my God, I don't even know where to begin. Thank you so much for everything. You guys have all been so understanding and patient with me and Lola. And also, I'd like to acknowledge my other fellow Student Trustee who's just a sophomore, our first-ever sophomore, our first-ever underclassman. She is amazing and I've never met somebody so motivated or a young person who was willing or even able to take on such a big role that's usually meant for older people. So she's truly inspiring. All of you for giving me this opportunity, for teaching me and for celebrating me, thank you so much. It would have not been possible without the help of so many teachers and my family and everything. I wouldn't, I'm actually not going to UCLA. I did get into UCLA, I'm going to Berkeley. I got a Regent's and Chancellor Scholarship, so I will be going there. Yeah. But yeah, I can't wait to, I actually plan to continue doing student government in Berkeley. Their student government is, is very serious and I, I hope to, to continue producing change in my, in my new school. So thank you.
Thank you so very much. And Berkeley's a great school too, Fran, you made a good choice. Okay, we actually need...
President Smith Folds, I have a point of order, please. I was contacted by the Chair of the DLCAPs.
Oh, you're too fast, Fran, that's what I'm about to do. I got you. So we are going to go back and make sure that we hear from the DLCAP Chair for their five-minute standing report. So we are so sorry that we overlooked that and thank you so much for calling our attention to it. Go ahead, so wait for the five minutes and then you're up.
All right, thank you for giving us the time to come back to this. Once again, my name's Lucas Manix, I am the current DLCAP's Chair. I'm going to put on my DLCAP's hat now, so I have my parent hat. So tonight, we, we come as a, as a DLCAP to really kind of echo a lot of the same themes they've heard from a lot of parents tonight, which is focused on parent voice, community voice, and student achievement. This year, throughout the, the DLCAP's process, there has continued to be a lack of responsiveness, a lack of structure for, for us to be able to do our jobs. So our main recommendation tonight is really based around the process of how the LCAP is, is created. And especially for a year like this where we're going into a brand-new, three-year LCAP, the process is just, it's broken. We don't have a clear and effective way to really analyze our programs to understand whether or not they're effective for achieving their end goal, which is student achievement for our unduplicated count. So based on that, it's our recommendation as a, as a DLCAP to reject this year's LCAP. So we implore the board to reject it outright because it does not reflect the needs of our students and the realities that they're facing and it does not uplift the voices of our students and the voices of our community to focus on the student achievement for our unduplicated count. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Yolanda, who's going to speak some more and give her some time to speak. So she's online. If you can unmute her, please.
We're going to pause our time too. It was at like before three minutes.
Thank you.
Ms. Yolanda, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, West Contra Costa Superintendent and our trustees. I really hope that you heard Lucas tonight. I know that for at least the, the last 10 years and several of you who are currently our trustees have been in this conversation with us. There is no way that we can act with integrity in looking at the way that we do this work. The DLCAP process must be fixed. This is your responsibility as trustees to fix structures and systems, and this is a broken system. We cannot with integrity advocate for the passing of a budget that is not based on real-time data. You did not give us the data in, before we have to make the choices that you're asking us to sign off on for programs and services. There is no way in good conscience that we can do this. ASAT has put before you several recommendations, recommendations that we've been putting before you for several years now. Our parents continue to ask for these things as we surveyed them this year. Same things we've been asking for. We keep coming back because you have not honored your agreement to put, to implement these programs and services. This year, the, most of our parents have asked for an increase, obviously, in African-American instructors as well as targeted intervention to support the academic success of African-American students. We've been asking for this for over 10 years. Finally, in the last few months, we got a few in one of the mission-critical schools. This is inadequate and it never was going to move the needle in a way that's going to make a difference for our community. Please hear us. Fix this system. It is absolutely broken and it lacks integrity. It lacks honesty. We are lying to our students and our community about these services and programs that will meet the academic needs of our students. Our numbers tell us that we are not meeting the academic needs of our students. Please, it's time to really do something different or it's time to change our trustees. Thank you.
Thank you so much, DLCAP. We are now moving to B13, Approval of the Resolutions. Director Forrest, these are your items.
Thank you and good evening, Board, President Smith Folds, Trustees and Superintendent Cabinet. Resolution Number 2324, 2324, excuse me, 84, Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2024. Now therefore be resolved. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education declares the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs the Superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that engage students in meaningful learning, research, and writing about our immigrant students and families.
Thank you so much, Director Forrest. Board, is there a motion? I will move Resolution two-three-two-four-eighty-four, Immigrant Heritage Month. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, are there any comments? I would like to say that we um, are duty-bound and determined as a board to make sure that we are honoring all of the people and all of the um, the students in our district. And we know that we have a large immigrant population that chooses WCCUSD every single day and to come to our schools every single day. And um, this resolution shows that we have a value to that and we are honoring that. So um, thank you, Director Forrest, for bringing this. Clark Gonzalez-Loy, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, President. I'll, I'll make it super quick. Um, because of everything you said and everything we've heard tonight. Um, this is why I believe one of our priorities next year has to be to start a newcomer program in our elementary sites. So I want to make sure that that is stated and that we follow through on that. And Dr. Hurst, that's part of his vision. So um, I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board, let's take a vote. Uh, Trustee Palcar?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Loy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Um, Director Forrest, your next item, please.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty-three-twenty-four-eighty-three, LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education declares the month of June as Pride Month. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs the Superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that engage students in meaningful learning, research, and writing about our LGBTQ plus students and families.
Thank you so very much. Board, is there a motion?
For President, I'm over Resolution number two-three-two-four-eighty-three, LGBTQ plus Pride Month, June twenty-twenty-four.
Sorry. Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. Board, are there any comments? Clark Gonzalez-Loy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, one of the things that uh, I wanted to just impress is that last year, we made a big point and priority to make sure our schools flew the pride flag. Um, and I've been driving around our schools on the last week of school and a lot of them don't have the pride flag up. Um, so I just want to make sure that next year, there's, I don't think it's anyone's fault, but I think that next year, we just need to send a communication to principals uh, in May, reminding them to put up their flag in June. Um, because I think it's really important for those that see it. And we've heard the stories and I don't want to take too much more time, but it's really important and critical for a lot of our students, so, and community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clark Gonzalez-Loy. I will echo what you just said. It is very important that um, inclusion means belonging and our students, our staff, our family, and our community need to feel as if they belong, they belong, and they also need to see that they belong and they need to um, we have a duty to make sure that that happens. And one way is because of your leadership getting that passed as President of the Board last year. So thank you so very much for that. And it is incumbent that we make sure that those flags are flown, because it is, it shows our intentionality. Okay, Board, let's go to the vote. Trustee Palcar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Loy?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Um, Dr. Forrest? Dr. Forrest, I like that. Director Forrest, uh, your last item, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Resolution number two-three-two-four-eighty-five, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four as Juneteenth, a day of celebration of the past, present, and future of Black resilience, culture, and liberation.
Thank you so much. Board, is there a motion?
Yes. Motion to move the Resolution number twenty-three-twenty-four-eighty-five, Juneteenth.
I'll second that. Board, are there any comments? Do you have any? Uh, I'll have a comment. Um, Juneteenth is a, uh, now national holiday. So everyone has Juneteenth off. I urge everyone to take that time to look at the history of Juneteenth, understand the importance of Juneteenth, understand why it means so much to so many African-Americans in this country, and then to educate someone else about Juneteenth. As a, this board takes seriously anti-racism. We take seriously the role of all people in our community and we are focused on the most marginalized and ensuring that they are protected and heard and seen. And that they know that this system that we are actively trying to correct, we're doing it with intentionality. So again, when you celebrate Juneteenth and when you celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month and when you celebrate LGBTQUIA+, ensure that you're doing it with the intentionality to learn more and teach more. I'm complete. All right, to the vote. Trustee Palcar?
Yes.
Great. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Great. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Great. Trustee Clark Gonzalez-Loy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much, uh, Director Forrest. Thank you for your hard work. We are now moving to our consent item. We are moving to Agenda Item C. Board, is there anything that someone wants to pull off the consent? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. C fifteen, Ratification of Contracts, C sixteen, Contracts, and C seventeen, Adoption of Revised Board Policy, four-two-one-one, Recruitment and Selection.
On C fifteen, all of them?
Yes, please. I just have brief comments.
Same with C sixteen, all of them?
Yes, please. Just brief comments.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we, the consent items are now adopted. We are now moving to Agenda Item D, Dr. Hurst's Communication Report. Go ahead, sir.
Outstanding. Um, we're gonna be celebrating graduations. If we could pull up that uh, presentation, please. I appreciate it. So we're just gonna take a look at all of our graduation ceremonies. Uh, thank you, comms team, for putting this together. We really appreciate that. This is um, Vista Virtual, the cover slide. Next slide. And the next slide. And what they've tried to do is to put some pictures, snippets of pictures for each one of our graduations. So you can see on the far left, um, some pictures of middle, college, high school graduation. In the middle, we have Pinot Valley High School, pictures of their graduation. In the far right, we can see Vista High and Vista Virtual High School graduation. And next slide. Here is um, pictures of Gateway to College, their graduation. You can see in the middle, our adult school program, their graduation, and DeAnza on the far right. And next slide. On the far left, on this slide, you can see El Cerrito High School graduation. In the middle, Transition Program. We did take a poll and um, I think there was some consensus from some board members. It's just one of our favorite programs and graduation programs that we attended. They were all great, but this one rose to the top for a lot of us. And then you can see on the far right, the Richmond High School. And our next slide. Then here we have Kennedy High on the far left. And then in the middle, we can see Hercules High School. And then on the far right, Sylvester Greenwood Academy. And I will say, um, there was some consensus around this one as well, that this one was close to the top as well, Sylvester Greenwood Academy. And our next slide. Okay, here's the fun part. So we want to honor all of our, our graduates. We asked uh, board members to send in their graduation picture. Um, and lo and behold, we have President Smith Folds. She was eighteen. Nineteen ninety-five. Let's give her a round of applause. Oh, I'm sorry. Round of applause. And the next slide. That is me, Dr. Hurst. I hear the laughter. I had a, a little mini fro, just a little one. Next slide. Okay, so here's where we get to guess who the people are. So top left. Okay, I think we all know who that is. Can someone name it? That is Ms. Logan. And then that's the Ms. Logan? Yes, yes. That is Dr. Moses. All right, here's one. Let's see. The next one next to Dr. Moses. Anyone know? Anyone know? That is Ms. Neely Johnson. And then this one looks like the person. This is Dr. Johnson. She asked us to change out the pictures at the last moment. Uh, and who do we think this next person is next to Dr. Johnson? That is Mr. Freeze. And then far right, who do we think that one is? That is Ca-, that is Catherine Acosta. And what about bottom left? Who did you say? Dr. Pryor, that's right. Dr. Pryor. I had a hard time with this one right here. This cool, cool-looking person. Who do you think this is? That is Mr. Booker. That's a cool dude. And then next to Mr. Booker, who do we think this is? Summer Sigler. Yes. And then that's the Ms. Sigler. That is Ms. Forrest. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. This one gave me a run for my money too. Who's this cool guy? That is Mr. Flashman. That is Mr. Flashman. And then on the far right, Mr. Delion, cool dude as well. Let's give all of our former graduates a round of applause. Celebrating graduation season. And next slide. There we go. We all got them right. And that concludes my report. This was just some fun and we're just celebrating graduations and our older graduates as well. Thank you so much, everyone. This concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Cabinet, for participating. Uh, Board, do we have any questions? Trustee Palcar, see how fast it goes. Take pictures, honey, because you know, forty years down the road, you look different. Um, no questions. We're gonna move on. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. We're gonna move on to our first action item, E one. Public Hearing and Adoption, Special Education Annual Service Plan and Special Education Annual Budget Plan. Director Flashman, this is your item, sir.
There's no pictures of me with hair from a long time. There's not a lot of hair, though, in that picture. Uh, thank you, Board President, um, Trustees, Superintendent, um, here to talk today, uh, or this evening about our local plan uh, for special education. Um, this is a process that we go through every three years. Um, although the whole process is not done at once. Last year, uh, we brought forth Section B. Uh, today we will be reviewing uh, D and E. Um, next slide, please. Uh, so special education local planning areas are required to submit a local plan. Um, this is um, has to go through various steps and I'll go through all those steps today in this, in this uh, presentation. And there are essentially two um, uh, reasons for this, uh, two purposes here. One is to sh-, to ensure that all students um, in our area receive the services that they are due in their IEPs and to assure that we are compliant with federal and state codes and statutes. Next slide. I'll talk now about the process for development of the plan. Um, next slide, please. Um, there is a, a committee, a local plan committee that develops the plan um, and uh, basically builds off of previous plans and, and creates amendments as needed. Um, the plan, uh, committee is built up of um, uh, Committee of Representatives, uh, of Special Education, General Education Teachers, Administrators, um, selected by the groups that they represent, as well as parents, uh, members of the Community Advisory Committee, um, as well as uh, uh, other educators from around our district. The plan can be amended at any time, um, similar to, to other plans that we have in, in public education. It is a living document. Um, if there are findings of non-compliance, uh, or if there's a change in a SELPA's membership, governance, or any other element of the plan um, can be updated. Next slide, please. Uh, Assembly Bill eighteen oh eight, Trailer Bill Language, um, the Superintendent is to consult with the SELPA play, uh, the SELPA Administrator to confirm that the um, LCAP and um, the local plan are aligned. Uh, we also have a template that is developed for the local plan. Um, the county superintendent approves our local plan once uh, you as the board have approved it. Um, and it is, like I said, reviewed every three years. Um, and it will be posted to our uh, website and to the County Office of Education website. Next slide, please. So the approval process um, goes through these four steps. Uh, first, I come to the board um, for approval of our local plan. Uh, excuse me, once it's been approved here at the board, it's sent to the county superintendent uh, for signature. Uh, our CAC uh, board, uh, excuse me, chairperson will sign, um, and then we submit to the CDE for final approval. So we'll, we'll review now the required elements. I'll thank you, next slide. That we have to submit to the CDE. Uh, again, there's Sections A, B, C, D, and E, and then attachments. Um, again, Section B was reviewed last year, um, and is uh, approved, was approved by the board. Section A is, is um, kind of housekeeping. It's, it's list of names. It's the process. It's the dates that, uh, of, of meetings, et cetera. In Section A of the plan. Uh, Section C is the annual assurance, Assurances Support Plan, and then D and E are what we are, uh, I'm bringing to you today as well, um, which is the actual plan for services and the budget plan for special education. Next slide, please. Uh, Section A, like I said, it's, it's certifications. It's, it's, you know, for lack of a better term, housekeeping. It's, it's um, the administrative unit, uh, the dates of review, the dates of public hearings, um, the certifications by the SELPA Administrator Budget Plan, um, and certifications by the County Superintendent CAC, et cetera. Next slide, please. Again, Section B is what you approved uh, last June. Um, it is the governance and administrative structure of our SELPA. It's the role of the county office. It is the policies that we, that allow for participation of charter schools. Um, and uh, we have one charter school that is in our SELPA, um, that we still support. Um, it is the representation and participation of the CAC. It is the identification and description- It is the identification and description of the administrative unit. And again, it is updated every three years. Next slide please. Um, section B also, um, lays out the role of the SELPA administrator, uh, including hiring, supervising, and evaluating, um, and discipline of SELPA administrative staff. Uh, um, the method used to distribute federal and state funds, the operation of special education programs, monitoring and, uh, the appropriate use of federal, state, and local funds allocated for special education programs. Um, and how specialized equipment and services will be distributed within our SELPA. Again, that's all part of section B, which was approved last summer. Um, lastly, um, policy identification and location, uh, administration of operations and services, and the SELPA services themselves. So these are all parts of section B. Um, next slide, so section D is what, again, what we're bringing forth tonight. Um, it's the actual service budget plans, um, submitted, uh, separately from the rest of the local plan. This comes in annually. Uh, prior to submission, both, um, plans must be adopted at a public hearing. That is tonight. Um, the budget plan and service plans, um, must be posted, or a notice of that public hearing must be posted fifteen days prior to the hearing, which they were, it was sent out to all school sites and offices in the district, uh, for notice. Uh, and then lastly, that the budget and service plans may be revised during the fiscal year, again, it's a living document. Next slide please. Uh, the budget plan requirements, um, include, uh, the revenue that we, um, have, uh, by service, the total budget by object codes, federal and state revenue summaries, uh, the basic premise of the SELPA allocation plan, uh, our operating expenditures, and projected expenditures for supplemental aids and services in the regular classroom for students with low incidence disabilities. The service plan requirements, uh, we have a description of the services that are provided, uh, by our local ed- uh, education agency. The nature of the services and the physical location of those services, so if you look in the plan, it talks about each of the different related services that we provide, uh, throughout our schools and, and how they are provided. Um, must de- demonstrate that all eligible students shall have access to appropriate services specified in their IEP. Um, if you review that service plan, you may see some services that are checked no. That means that we don't have any students in our district currently who require those services. Um, if any students in our district did require one of those services, we would go back, like I said, it's a living document, we would provide that service and, and check yes. Uh, the required elements of the plan, these are kept locally. Um, we have inter-agency agreements. Um, we have the, uh, inter-agency agreements or other mechanisms for inter-agency coordination to provide a free and appropriate public education for our students. Um, these include but not limited to, uh, the California Children's Services, uh, Medical Therapy Unit, um, Head Start and Regional Center. Um, these are other agencies that we have to partner with in order to, uh, provide faith for all of our students. Policies and procedures, in addition to the federal assurances, each ed- entity providing special education must adopt policies and procedures. Next slide please. Um, all SELPAs in the state are using the same template, so the template that you see, uh, in the, uh, as in the attachment is, is a statewide template. Um, the assurances are required to be separate policies. Um, locations of policies and procedures are required to be listed in the template. Um, uh, administration of, uh, regionalized operations and services are now required to be described. And the annual services plan and budget plan are within the local plan. Next slide please. So the purpose of the local plan committee is to review the, uh, sections listed here, um, and to provide feedback and input on the development and, um, any amendments necessary to the plan, um, from year to year, and again, to provide input on that, uh, those plans. And that is, uh, my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so very much for the present, uh, the presentation. Board, we're doing three questions and two minute comments, are there any questions?
President Smith Folds, I'm sorry, um.
Thank you, do we have public comment on this item first?
There's no public comment.
Thank you so much. Okay, Board, we're doing three questions, two comments. Trustee Ruckler, I saw your hand, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you for the presentation. So can you explain what's new in the plan since the last plan? Uh, any additions or any subtractions or changes? And that, uh, not money, but just like actions and services.
Services are relatively the same, we don't have any, um, major changes to, to the service plan. We haven't had any, um, significant changes in, in the services that are necessary, so it's by and large, very similar.
Okay, thank you, and then as far as money and budget, are there any, are there any major changes, either positive or negative in, in budget, um, either in totality or by category?
Um, nothing that is, that will be any news, uh, to any of us. Um, we have seen, um, and we've been monitoring the, the growing, um, uh, uh, contribution, the general fund contribution. Um, it is in line with what we've been describing this year, so, so there's no surprises for the board. Um, it is larger than it was last year. Um, it's detailed in, in the, uh, attachment. Um, and we are working on our systems to bring that number down.
Okay, thank you, and then finally, is this, uh, part of, uh, is it? Sorry. Is this, um, the part of the plan where you would, uh, describe new supports for five oh four students, or what, what will happen now with five oh four students with a coordinator being eliminated?
So there will be no change to the supports and services to students with five oh fours. Um, uh, the, again, five oh four is, is a function of general education, uh, but as far as the services, we are working with, um, WCCA to ensure that, that those services and that coordination remains intact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, any other questions? Board, do they have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I move that we approve the special education and annual service plan and their budget.
Thank you, I'll second, Board, are there any comments? Uh, two minute clock, please, Ms., uh, Rosen, and then we'll do comments. Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Great, thank you, so thank you for the presentation, and I'm gonna make the same, uh, comment on LCAP. But it would be nice to see, and it doesn't have to be that in depth, what changed, you know, here's our plan. This is what changed in all these different categories, and then this is where the big chunks, what changed in the budget. And I think it would make it more transparent to the general public and also to the board, just to absorb the information. I mean, this is multiple, multiple pages of photocopied forms, and some of it, um, you need a microscope to ma- to read, especially the last few pages. And so I think that would just be really helpful if there was like a pre-seed that, that, uh, contained the changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any other comments? Seeing none, thank you Director Flashman, I really appreciate it. We are now moving to E2, resolution number two. Uh, we gotta vote, oh, look, I'm batting a hundred today, huh? All right, trustee Pal Carr, your vote, ma'am?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler, your vote?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now, thank you Director Flashman, I really appreciate it. We are now, thank you, we're now moving to E2, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash eighty. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Dr. Johnson, this is your item, please.
I apologize, can you please repeat that, we heard eight. You said, can you please repeat what you first said?
Sure, we are on E2, resolution number two, three, two, four, dash eighty. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Thank you, I just needed to hear that part. Yes, this is our declaration of need for fully qualified educators. This resolution will provide the district with temporary assignment options when a teacher with an appropriate credential is not available. This option, however, only applies to teachers who hold a current basic credential.
Thank you so very much. Staff, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you very much, we're moving to questions, does anyone have any questions? Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I do, so once you pass this, is this just something that you keep on file? And then that allows you to go out and, you know, if they haven't, if they're not totally cleared, you're allowed to do that hiring? Or does it go to the state for any informational purposes?
It's not something that you actually pass. What it is, is giving the school district permission, the state allows us per- permission, here's an example, to take someone with a multiple subject credential. However, on their transcripts, they have enough classes that would allow them to teach a science class. So you are allowed to use your credential that may be multiple subject to teach a single subject. That's what this allows the, um, district to determine.
Okay, so it's for misassignments. Right, isn't that what they call it?
It is, I'm sorry.
Is, is it called misassignments? Like if you're qualified for one of the.
It's a temporary assignment placement.
Okay.
For that school year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, we're moving to a motion.
President Smith Folds, I move for resolution number two, three, two, four, dash eight, zero. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board, do you have any comments? Seeing none, we're going to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you so very much, we're now moving to agenda item E3, AB twelve hundred, public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Smith Folds, and good evening Board. Uh, Board President, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, Superintendent Hurst, and esteemed trustees, uh, this evening, I'm bringing forth a public disclosure, uh, for AB twelve hundred pursuant to government code section three, five, four, seven point five, which states that before a public school employer enters into a written agreement with an exclusive representative covering matters within the scope of representation, the major provisions of the agreement, including but not limited to the cost that would be incurred by the public school employer under the agreement, for the current and subsequent years, shall be disclosed at a public meeting of the public school employer. We're bringing this item to you tonight in preparation for, um, the tentative agreement that our district has reached with UTR regarding labor settlement. What we've attached are the financial documents related to the tentative agreement that will come before you on June twenty-sixth. Uh, in addition to, um, disclosing these documents publicly, the documents must also be reviewed by the county office of education. And the purpose of the review is for the county to render an, an opinion on whether the district can meet its obligation within the terms of the tentative agreement. Um, we have a la- a letter from the county office of education, I'm sorry, the Contra Costa County of Office of Education, dated June tenth, uh, which states that the AB twelve hundred disclosure documents provided by the West Contra Costa Unified School District indicates that the district will be able to provide the funding for a one-time payment, uh, to the unit, the labor unit UTR. And what you'll see on the disclosure documents as well is the cost of the agreement. I want to point out that, uh, this agreement is costing zero dollars of ongoing funding from the general fund due to our fiscal situation. Our labor units have, uh, negotiated with us, uh, to provide, uh, one-time compensation to their members. And the total cost of that agreement is six million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars. All of those funds will come from one-time restricted resources, uh, and have been approved by the county. In addition to this tentative agreement, um, WCCUSD is also going to be asking the county for approval to extend bonuses to other labor units using restricted one-time funds as well. Uh, the additional costing consideration for those bonuses is about four million dollars. We are disclosing this to you this evening in preparation for bringing forth the tentative agreement next week, next meeting for UTR.
Thank you, thank you so much, Dr. Moses, I appreciate it. Staff, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you so much, we're now moving to questions, Board, are there any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I move for approval of the AB twelve hundred public disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second that. Board, do we have any comments? Go ahead, trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, I'm, I'll just wait for the clock. Thanks, Nance. Um, I just want to thank our staff, uh, for the negotiations process, I want to thank UTR. Um, but ultimately, I think that I speak for a few of us saying that we wanted to do this because we truly value our staff, um, and I think I'm speaking for our staff as well. Um, so this is not an easy lift with our current econ- you know, economic issues, um, and everything we've heard. Um, but I believe that ensuring that our staff, um, is compensated well, it should be and continue to be one of our priorities. Um, so I'm thankful that we were able to come to a disagreement. Um, I really truly wish we could do more. Uh, but, um, we have a lot of competing priorities. Um, so I'm, I'm just really thankful that we're able to do this. Um, and thank you, uh, Dr. Moses, to you and your staff for being creative and the way to be able to, um, achieve an agreement between both parties. Uh, and thank you to our, our educators, um, and staff at our schools, uh, for, for everything they do, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll wait for the clock and I'll just echo what Clerk Gonzalez Hoy said. Um, Dr. Moses and your team, thank you so very much. Thank you for showing an amazing level of, um, unreasonable hospitality, which is what we're going for. Thank you for understanding the majority of the Board's vision to continue to value our educators and value every employee that works in the district. And you have really made a dollar out of fifteen cents. And people don't understand that because school budgets are complicated. And they are very, very hard to understand, but not only have you been transparent with the budget, you have been an educator on the budget. I believe that I know more about the budget because you sit in that seat. So thank you so very much to our educators. We hope that you feel the value from the Board, and we hope that you feel the value from the district because that is our sole intention. Um, I look forward to you bringing things for the other units as well. Um, but this is a nice way to end the school year and to look forward to the next year for our educators. Thank you, I am complete. Okay, Board, we are now gonna go to the vote, trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy is not your turn yet, sorry, I said your name out loud, it wasn't your turn, trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Okay, now Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you so very much, I was looking at you and I said it. All right, we are now moving to E4, public hearing resolution number two, three, two, four, dash eight, two, for the approving the engineering's report, confirming diagram, and ordering the continuation of the levy assessment for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Freeze, this is your item.
Yes, good evening, we were asking the Board tonight to hold the public hearing. Uh, once we hold a public hearing, we're asking the Board to approve a resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, dash eighty-two. Approving the engineering report and confirming diagram and ordering the con- con- continuation of the levy of the assessment for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, I need to open the hearing? Yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Hearing's now open. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment.
Thank you, go ahead.
Consuela Lara, please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. That concludes our public comment.
Ms. Laura, if you could reach out to one of us and let us know if you're there or there's a problem on your end. We would appreciate it. Staff, let's just give her one minute to see if we can. Say it again. Oh, she took down her hand. Okay, never mind. Alright, we are now headed to questions? Oh, I gotta close it? Close. Alright, uh, do we have any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you very much. We have uh, a very active member of the public who insisted on uh, raised many concerns about this document and wanted to see changes in it. Would you be able to explain to me if her changes are reflected in the, in the document? And if, if not, what has not been um, accepted or reflected? Thank you.
Uh, we do have Melanie Gilroy with SCI Consulting with us tonight, um, and she has been promoted. So, Melanie?
Hi, good evening, members of the board, um, district staff and members of the community. My name is Melanie Lee. And um, just uh, to address uh, trusty Reckler's um, question, we believe that we have in fact met all of the questions that the uh, property owner has requested of the engineer's report. Uh, as we um, stated in our, in the May twenty-ninth meeting, there are some, you know, dynamics in, in terms of the calculation to the um, uh, the general and benefit, uh, special benefit calculation. And we understand that the property owner was looking for very specific information. Unfortunately, we can't meet that level of detail with the way that the engineer's report and the calculation works. But we do believe we did our absolute best to meet that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're complete, trustee Reckler.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, is there a, a motion?
President, I move that we approve our solution number two, three, two, four, dash, eight, two. Um, approving the engineer's report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Seeing none, we are headed to the vote. Trustee Pau Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to E five, approval of the, let's see, approval to proceed with the security fencing improvement for El Cerrito High School. Mr. Freeze, this is your item, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve and approve the, I'm sorry, to approve the security fencing for El Cerrito High School. On May twenty-third, the safety committee met. Uh, we discussed uh, the security uh, safety barriers around El Cerrito High School. We presented a, a solution by inclu- adding additional fencing between the gymnasium building and the uh, sports fields. Um, we presented three different options for how that might be enclosed. We presented an option where it was a, a chain link fence that would enclose the entire enclosure. We presented option number two, which was a wrought iron fence and I'm sorry, I want to make sure I got the right option for you. And the third option was an entire wrought, wrought iron fence or wrought iron fence with a metal gate. Um, the committee approved the selection, which was a chain link fence with wrought iron gate. If you could pull up the uh, agenda item and attach to that is a slide. It should have the link on there to open it up. And we do have Mr. Booker here, here with us tonight that could comment on the fencing as well if there were questions. So what we have in, here in the first slide is looking at the El Cerrito campus as we look down on the gymnasium building out towards the sports complex. Currently, the only uh, protection we have on that side is, is a pipe bollard gate that protects cars from coming in. But it doesn't stop uh, pedestrian traffic, students to the public from entering the campus on the south side of that facility. So what's being proposed, as you see in the red line, would be a new fence that would be constructed along that portion of the facility. Um, and where you see those diamonds, those diamonds that actually are stars would represent gates. So on the far right, there would be a pedestrian gate at the top of the stairwell for public to enter uh, for sports events. Where you see the stars in the center, that would be actually be the new gate that would uh, it'd be eight, eight-foot-high fence that would protect that entryway. And then when you see all the way to the left-hand side or to the north side of that facility, this is the accessible ramp that gets us not only into the gymnasium, but gets us out to the sports field. And there would be a gate there, so students uh, would be able to travel on a safe path of travel, all enclosed with inside the fencing during the school day. And just scroll down. This is the view of what the fence would look like. So what you see is your typical uh, oneish mesh uh, black chain link fence, which matches what's currently along the field property itself. The gate in the middle would be a wrought iron black gate. And that's mainly because of the durability over time. We want to make sure that it's sturdy and will survive uh, the test of time. For this particular option, uh, once this is approved and we go to bid, we've got thirty-five, thirty to forty-five days uh, to have this type of fence constructed. Again, the material would be black chain link with the metal gates. The height would be eight foot and the budget for this would be eighty thousand dollars. And I'll take any questions.
Board, are there any questions? Okay, let's go, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. So again, what's the purpose of the fence?
So the fence would actually be able to protect, if you scroll back up in that upper slide. It protects the driveway entry that comes along the side of gymnasium, all the way back to the back of the property. Um, and the entryway into the sports complex. What we have now is students that actually travel across this walkway as they go out to the sports field. They can actually walk off campus or individuals can walk onto the campus and it's non-protected. It also protects individuals from entering our campus um, unsupervised. This requires uh, the security, campus security officer to be stationed on the side in order to monitor that position. And Mr. Booker, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, thank you, uh, board president and trustees. The reason for the fencing is what Mr. Freeze stated, but it also is in line with our single point of access. Making sure that we can control the access into schools at all time. If you look at that area, um, currently, it exposes the campus not only to the area of the fields, but it also exposes the, the school uh, from the gym side and the backside of the school. Um, so with this fence and gates, it detours and actually prevents a lot of the intrusions that we have had in the past.
Um, but you do need to have crash bars to get out of it, right? So there's going to be a gate where you just hit it and you can walk out. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the gate on the left-hand side or the, the north side of the property at the bottom of the, the ramp would have a crash bar or panic hardware on it for accessibility to exit. The gate that would be on the, on the south side of the property, that would not require a panic bar that is an accessible exit. So that could be locked down during the day, then unlocked for access by the public in the evenings or during a sporting event.
And then finally, this big wrought iron gate, is this on any kind of pulley-type system? So that when staff comes into the parking lot and wants to get in or wants to get out, how does that work for access?
So this would not be electric gate. This would be a manual swing gate. Um, mo- most typical to what we have on most of our campuses. It would be half, it would be open in the morning for traffic to come in, uh, traffic going out. Uh, we'd have to have a CS unlock it um, for exiting traffic. But it is not electric gate.
Okay, thank you. I have comments when the time comes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I move that we approve the sorry, that we approve the process to proceed. I'm having a hard time wording it, to proceed with this, with security fencing improvements for El Cerrito High School. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, are there comments? Let's wait for the two-minute clock, please. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate your efforts to keep the community safe, but this is a waste of money. First of all, students will be popping over this thing left and right. I see it every single day on the back fence. Students will be over this in a second. Number two, nothing prevents them from coming over and opening that crash bar for somebody to walk in. Number three, people, cars go in and out of there all day long. Not all staff just comes in and is there all day and leaves. It's an active driveway that's opened a lot. And finally, it's really ugly. So what I really suggest that you do is to rethink this project. And these eighty thousand dollars, you transfer that over to transition, which has a whole backfield, which is open and insecure with very vulnerable students, some of which are really mentally fragile and could just run off that back cliff at any time. Thank you.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward and thank you to this uh, safety committee for making this recommendation. Um, I think that when it comes to changes and entrances like this, it comes down to education. Um, I think that all fences in our schools can to some extent get open uh, because of the measures that we have to put in in order, in case there's emergencies and families or students need to exit. So I think that this is another example of a campaign the school needs to do to educate families and students on the right usage uh, for these fences. Um, I, after looking at all the research that we've heard from Mr. Booker and Dr. Hearst about single points of entry, I do think that something like this is important for the school. Because just last week, I drove to El Cerrito High School and during lunch, there were probably about a hundred students in that back area accessible to the street. So now, could they just walk out of that fence? Of course, right? But I think it comes down to education again, right? And ensuring that we talk about safety. Um, so whether it's pretty or not, or whether it's the best thing we can do, I think that it follows this research that we've heard about and we've looked at. Um, so if there's changes that need to be made about the look, maybe a specific location, then I think that's, you know, something for you all to discuss with the site. But I do think that it's necessary for the safety of the school. Um, and again, I think that it's up to the site to figure out how to educate the families and students moving forward. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a comment. Um, I urge everyone to go back and watch the video of the safety committee meeting when we had an in-depth conversation about this fencing. I think that uh, Mr. Booker and Mr. Freeze did an excellent job explaining the why behind it. And we also had conversations about the options and which option would do best and the why behind that option. I think that if I remember correctly, and please, Mr. Booker, Mr. Freeze, let me know if I'm not saying this correctly. But uh, one of the big and first steps is a deterrent. And having an eight-foot fence is a deterrent. If we have students that can go over an eight-foot fence, they need to be in track. And they need to be doing the jumpy thing. I forgot what it's called. But they need, high jump. They need to be doing the high jump. This is a deterrent to people who would come in to El Cerrito and who have come into El Cerrito and who have done damage to our students and have done damage to the safety and the feeling of safety at that school. So I appreciate the fact that we are taking an active measure to deter intruders succumbing into our campus. Um, I think that to clerk Gonzalez Hoy's point, it is about education. If you have someone that, or people that drive in and out of that gate every, or in and out of that area every single day, the cattle gate still has to be open. So they still need to have, this gate will still be, have to be open. So I think that uh, I just want to take a moment and thank the safety team and thank uh, Mr. Booker and Mr. Freeze for all of your effort and moving towards really creating safety on our campuses. So, thank you. I am complete. We are now moving to the vote. Okay, trustee Pau Carr, your vote, ma'am?
Abstain.
Thank you, trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Absolutely not.
Thank you, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to action item number E six, recommend approval of employment agreement for associate superintendent human resources. Dr. Hearst, this is your item.
Thank you, ma'am. The board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with Dr. Camille Johnson to serve as associate superintendent human resources. The employment agreement has been attached to the agenda online for review. The employment agreement provides the following. The contract term is for three years from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The associate superintendent of hu- human resources annual salary is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents with health and welfare, welfare benefits consistent with educational administrators of the district. And now I'm turning it back over to the board president.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment.
Thank you. Can we put the one-minute clock on the board, please?
Ms. Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Oh, I'll wait for the time. I have one minute.
Yes, ma'am, one minute for action item comments.
Alright, thank you. So, um, Dr. Johnson, it was nice uh, chatting with you yesterday, very briefly. Um, I'm just here to say that uh, as a member of UTR's bargaining team from twenty, so two thousand nine to twenty fourteen, one thing I said to then-leadership in the district is that um, to find a way to include educators in the hiring process. Um, because we are the ones who are in the trenches. There are those of us who are very committed to this district for the reasons that we have remained committed. Um, not to fault anybody in HR, but it's the teachers who are in the trenches. And so to bring teachers K through twelve, or really preschool uh, through twelfth grade with you some kind of way. I know there are budgetary constraints, but who can really tell the story of why we are here, why we stay, and to encourage others to come and be with us um, to, to be here for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Board, is there a motion?
President Smith Folds, I will move the approval of the recommendation of employment agreement for the associate superintendent of human resources uh, who is Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Uh, clerk Gonzalez Hoy, if we could put the two-minute clock up for comments, please?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to uh, speak directly to Dr. Johnson and thank you for being in our district. Uh, thank you for choosing our district. Um, I've been very impressed with some of the work you've done this year. And I look forward to continuing to see the work you do in our future, in future years here. Um, and I look forward to running into you at Trade Joss every Sunday. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Are there any other comments? I have a comment. Thank you so much for your work this year. Thank you for your work on the negotiations team as well. We want to reach out and um, make sure that we say thank you to the negotiations team for all the hard work that they have done. Thank you for um, diving into HR and doing the best to recruit and to retain our teachers and our employees in the district. It's not an easy job, but we appreciate and we look forward to seeing what you can do next. I am complete. Thank you. Okay, board, we are now going to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations. Thank you. We are now moving on to item E seven, recommend approval for employment agreement for associate superintendent business services. Dr. Hurst, this is your item, sir.
Thanks so much, ma'am. The board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with Dr. Kim Moses to serve as the associate superintendent, chief business officer. The appointment agreement has been attached to the agenda item online for review. The appointment agreement provides the following. The contract term is for three years from July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. The associate superintendent, chief business officer, annual salary is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents with health and welfare benefits consistent with educational administrators of the district. And now I'll turn it back over to board president.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Ms. Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'll wait for the clock to, okay. So of course, I'm gonna say something to support my classmate from John F. Kennedy High School, class of nineteen eighty-nine. Dr. Moses, Kim, we are so proud of you and your commitment, your dedication, because this is not an easy position to choose to take on. It was a choice. And so I just want to say uh, from those of us from Richmond who have walked the halls of Kennedy High School, we support you. We are here for you. You know that. And just, I wanted to say it out loud. And it's that I value you. I appreciate you. And um, I definitely support you. And I am not the only one from Kennedy High School. So congratulations. Uh, I guess maybe I shouldn't say congratulations because the board hasn't voted yet. Um, um, but yeah, just know we are here for you day in and day out and that we love you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
That concludes public comment.
President Smith holds. I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of employment agreement for associate superintendent business services for Dr. Kim Moses.
Abity, Abity, trusty Christian. You were gonna second, but I'll second. I'll second. Um, do we have any comments from the board? Go ahead. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you so much. Um, Dr. Moses, I just want to say that you can have picked the best, a better year to come in and do this work. Um, and I just say that jokingly, um, but you have done incredible work under very difficult circumstances. Um, and I'm so thankful that you decided to um, head into this different work than what you were doing. You're always an amazing principal, uh, but you're even in a better CF, CEVO, which I can't believe I can say because you're already so good. Um, and I'm just really thankful for your leadership um, as well. And I look forward to seeing what we do in the next few years um, as we get through this big issue in our budget and then we can really focus on on the important things. So thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Moses, I just want to tell you thank you. You have shown what integrity looks like. You've shown what transparency looks like. You have shown what it's like to be an educator in your department and to educate the entire community. I think if the community has listened and paid attention, they know more about the school budget now than ever before. You are a dynamic educator when it comes to being able to deliver that information in a no-nonsense layman's term, which is what we need to have our entire community educated about the budget. You have done a fantastic job helping us to right the ship and to stay steadfast and for us to keep it upright. So it's not an easy task. I know that um, sometimes it's very lonely being the one to have to say no all the time. And we appreciate your no and we honor your yes when it comes to the budget. So thank you very much and congratulations. I can't say congratulations yet, but I'll say it in a minute. All right. We are now moving to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr, your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Congratulations. And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to agenda item E eight, recommend approval of employment agreement for interim associate superintendent, teaching and learning. Dr. Hurst, let me do this. Can we take about a five-minute break? Just so uh, we can get ourselves together and we will be back in five minutes. All right. Let's take a uh, staff, put a little five-minute on there for me. And then we will be back. Thank you very much. Uh, community will be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are back. We are now moving to E eight, recommend approval of employment agreement for interim associate superintendent, teaching and learning. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you, ma'am. The board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with Catherine Acosta Verpraske to serve as interim associate superintendent, teaching and learning. The employment agreement has been attached to the agenda item online for review. The employment agreement provides the following. The contract term is for one year from July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The interim associate superintendent of teaching and learning annual salary is two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents with health and welfare benefits consistent with educational administrators of the district. And now I'll turn it back over to the board president.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself.
I didn't know that I raised my hand for this one. Maybe I had not lowered my hand. I don't know who this individual is, but I'm guessing since um, I believe it's a female um, that she's in good standing. There are um, great things about this person. So just as an educator in this district, I look forward to what she will bring to the district and help and assist with. Um, I'm a special ed teacher, so one thing I will say, please don't leave special ed out. I feel like a lot of things go on in this district and like special ed is left out. And I would appreciate a specifically intentionally being included in all things in this district. My students are earning, I'm a resource teacher, so my students are earning a diploma. I would like to know things that are going on within this district that pertain to my students, even though they are special ed. So that's just me and my experience in this district. I would just like a a specific reach out to special ed teachers so that our students can receive all the information, all the resources available to them and their academic achievement.
Thank you very much. Is there any more public comment?
We have one more.
Go ahead.
Karina Ponse, could please unmute yourself?
Hi. Today I'm coming to you as a parent, not as an employee. I do want that to be noted. Um, as a parent and a former graduate from WCCUSD, I want to say that I really appreciate the strategy of putting a Latinx person in cabinet. We really do need to diversify, especially because a high population is Latinx, bilingual, multilingual. And we really need to acknowledge that. And as a parent, I know I want to see somebody that looks like me and my child in cabinet. And so I really appreciate that um, that opportunity given to Ms. Acosta um, for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Uh, that concludes public comment.
Sorry, staff, I over, overspoke. Um, board, let's go to a motion.
President, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of employment agreement for interim associate superintendent of teaching and learning for Catherine Acosta Verpraske.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, I just want to uh, appreciate uh, Ms. Acosta Verpraske, which I will get it. I'll get better over time at saying her last name. Um, but for taking this leadership position, um, I've known uh, her for uh, quite a few years as leader of Montalban K eight. And she truly has made some fantastic work and change at that school. So I really look forward to see how uh, that continues in her new role. Um, and thank you again for that. And I look forward to seeing her um, in this position for the next few years.
Michael, thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go to the vote. Trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
I'm sorry, which one this is?
This is for Captain Miss Catherine.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And abstain. Thank you. We are now moving to E nine, recommend approval for employment agreement for interim social, nope, interim associate superintendent, K through twelve operations. Dr. Hurst?
Thank you. The board is being asked to approve an employment agreement with Summer Sigler to serve as the interim associate superintendent of K twelve operations. The employment agreement has been attached to the agenda item online for review. The employment agreement provides the following. The contract term is for one year, July first, twenty twenty four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The interim associate superintendent of K twelve operations annual salary is two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents with health and welfare benefits consistent with educator, educational administrators of the district. Turn it back over to the board president.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Maisha Harris Gash, can you please unmute yourself?
Good evening. And um, I have had my own lived experiences with Ms. Sigler. And all I would say is in general, I'm just making a general statement. I am a black woman all day, every day. I care about my black students all day, every day. Yes, I recognize that I am at my alma mater and the demographics have shifted over time and that is okay because I'm here for all my students. I don't care what you look like. I don't care what your lifestyle is. I'm here for all my students for them to be successful at the next level for a world that does not want them to succeed for the simple fact of what they look like. I tell my students, you have not even opened up your mouth yet. But people are gonna make judgments about you based on what you look like. And so all I'm saying in this moment is that I care about my black students. I need everybody to care about our black students, even though they are a decreasing number in this district. And then the question becomes, why are they a decreasing number in this district? Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Are there any more public comments? Okay, board, we are now moving to uh, a motion? Did I just get questions?
No, we have questions in closed session.
That's right. So we're now moving to a motion.
Um, motion, uh, sorry.
Sorry.
You threw me off too. No. Um, I move that we approve the recommendation of employment agreement for interim associate superintendent of K twelve operations uh, for Summer Sigler.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are now moving to comments. Any comments, board? Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. I'll make them quick. Um, I want to also thank Ms. Sigler for stepping into this position. Um, I really appreciate Dr. Dr. Hersch, your vision for the uh, this department and how it's going to be split. Um, I've seen Ms. Sigler uh, create really positive change at the Anza High School while she was there uh, for quite a few years, including improvement um, of academics, graduation rates, and A three G requirements. Um, so I'm really thankful uh, that she's decided to step into this position moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Dr. Hurst, thank you for um, having a vision to split the department up and to make sure that the work is evenly distributed so it will be able to uh, move forward. We know that this is a hard job to have and we saw uh, it done very well, but it took a toll. So for you to separate it, that is good. Um, my votes tonight are not a vote for anything except there needs to be long, there needs to be proven work in this kind of field first. I just want to let you know that. All right, here we go. To the vote. Trustee Pal Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Thank you. We are now moving to F, discussion items and reports. We are moving to F one, public hearing, twenty-four, twenty-five. Local control accountability plan. Uh, Ms. Neely Johnson, Dr. Moses, these are your items. Go ahead, please.
President Smith holds. Uh, Ms. Neely Johnson is asking, do we need to open a public hearing? Well, that's a fantastic question. Let's see. I'm gonna say yes. So thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson, for that reminder. I am opening the public hearing. And before I do that, I think I have to call for public comment, correct? Thank you. Are there any public comments? Yes, we have public comment. Lucas Menanix.
Hello again. Sorry for being bad for their time. Um, once again, I am here to speak about the LCAP after having uh, as as you, we only have a few days to review it and, you know, speeding it on the brokenness of this process, having only a few days to review such a complicated document um, just kind of speaks to that, that brokenness of the process. I want to speak to, speak specifically about uh, a couple of sections. The overall, when you look at the overall LCAP, this year, we underspent by three million dollars. Uh, that's in the report. One of those areas that we specifically underspent was in elementary school support, which we underspent by one point six million dollars. This, next year, we've decided to add an additional one point three million dollars to that budget. So almost doubling that, doubling that budget when we didn't even spend that. While we're still taking away uh, sixteen percent from site funds. This to me, once again, does not compute if we are really looking at student achievement and what's really serving our students. If we're not able to fully implement these programs as they were written, then we shouldn't be continuing to fund them. If you're a leadership in the organization and somebody underspends their budget, you don't keep giving them more money to keep doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Are there any comments?
Yes, thank you. Our next public comment is Sarah Menanix. Please unmute yourself.
Hi again. Um, earlier I spoke specifically about Fairmont's Title I status. Um, and I want to say a little bit more. The district has control over how they disperse these funds. And rather than an all or nothing approach to Title I funds, they could disperse funds based on the percentage of free and reduced price meal eligible students at each site, or even proposed tiers for how they disperse these federal funds, rather than arbitrarily stripping them away from a school that critically needs them. I'd also like to focus more on the budget and specifically how it relates to site funds. District-wide, the budget for school site funds is being cut by sixteen percent. But Fairmont's LCFF funds are being cut by twenty-five percent. So why are Fairmont's LCFF funds being cut more than the district as a whole? The district is losing money as families continue to move their kids to private school, and this is going to continue to happen with budget decisions like this. And we're seeing the reality of this at Fairmont as several parents have burnt out and left the district this year. This budget is hugely flawed and we're hoping that you vote against it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. And I was really looking for this uh, document like last week and it wasn't available at the time. So I'm a type of person, I gotta plan my life. Uh, what I will say just, I'm hoping that once I am able to get into it, that I see um, that we're gonna work on writing. Like, I'm a high school teacher. Like I said, my kids, my students are learn, uh, earning a diploma. Writing is 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 not at grade level. Let me just say that is the, in the nicest way possible. So hopefully there are funds and resources and I will ask questions to my site administration as well as other individuals within the district because writing is really poor. And um, our young people need to know how to write effectively. And also for my ELs, I have shared with some people that at Kennedy High School, our ELs get stuck at level three. So hopefully, because I've done some research. So hopefully, cuz I've done some research, hopefully we will, there are funds available to work on that as well. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so very much. Now we're moving to the presentation. Now we're moving to the presentation, um, Miss Neely Johnson and Dr. Moses.
So, um, good evening, um, President Smith Folds, clerk Gonzalez Hoy, trustees, Dr. Hurst. And community, um, we will presenting the um LCAP plan. Um, this is review and then we'll be coming back on the twenty sixth for, to vote for approval. Next slide. So, um, basically, um, this year, we really did. Align our strategic plan cuz we were writing that at the same time with um feedback for our LCAP plan. Um, we engaged um many of our um packs. We also engaged our community across the district. Um, our accountability plan, um, and our LCAP, brave minds, bold leaders and big dreams, that was. Really does, I would say it was developed as a result of a lot of the feedback that we received through that process. Next slide. Our um strategic plan, as you see here, is the vision, um, making sure that um our students are learning. Our learner centered in the community is fostering students that are going to develop a sense of passion. About what they do when they become adults. Um, that our students are creative and open to all possibilities that are college and career. And um that our students are empowered learners with the two tools to choose a path that ignites that passion. And of course, our equity statement is included here. Next slide. So the goals that um as we were looking at our strategic alignment with our LCAP alignment. We were really looking at not them being so dependent, but really interdependent. To really inspire the implementation of exciting new techniques and um highlighting some of the foundational work. That we're doing in our district, our educators, our school leaders and our classified staff. So I'm gonna do review some demographics. So if you see here, um, when we look at our LCAP, our LCAP is really focusing on some of our specific groups that we listed here. And this is where the bulk of these funds should be spent to support those students. So um in our district, um, our students, um socioeconomically disadvantaged. Is at about, at about sixty four point nine percent. Um, we have thirty percent English learners. Um, students with disabilities is the next group, which is fourteen point eight two percent. And then um our lo, our next group is homeless students, and I like to say unhoused students. Which are two point thirteen percent and our first foster youth, um, youth is less than one percent. Next slide. Student demographics, um, when we look at our largest population in our district, um, it's Hispanic. And coming in at fifty four point seventy seven percent. And then, as you see, um, African American is the next largest, um. Demographic race for race and ethnicity at twelve point four percent. And then our Asian students at ten point eight nine percent and our white students at ten point three five percent. Uh, we have students at six point three percent that are, that have checked who are more racist. And then our next um is four point seven percent Filipino. And um Pacific Islanders and our American um Indian groups are less than one percent. Next slide. So student enrollment trends, um, over the past four years, and this is not unique just to our district. This is really throughout um the country, there's been a decline in enrollment. Um, and over the past four years, we started, if you look in twenty twenty. We're at approximately about twenty eight, a little over twenty eight thousand students. We are now in twenty twenty four at twenty five thousand five seventy five students. And so decline over the four years has been about two thousand six hundred and seventy one students. Now to go to our goals. This year, we really focused on, once again, alignment with, as I've said before, we were working on our strategic plan and our LCAP plan at the same time. And so really looking at that feedback to really focus in and hone in on some of the things that were coming up in that feedback. Goal number one, authentic engagement, and and we have five goals. Goal one, go number one is authentic engagement. Goal number two is universal systems and structures. Goal number three is the relentless attention to achievement, agency and access. Goal number four, students with disabilities and goal number five is targeted intervention and supports. And this is, the focus of this goal is to enable our underperforming students to achieve and thrive. Next slide. So, um, this slide really just talks about what the LCAP plan is. So we are currently ending the last three years of a plan and we're beginning for twenty four twenty five, the next three years. So the LCAP is a three-year plan. It describes goals, actions and services and expenditures to support student outcomes, positive student outcomes. And also that address our state and local priorities. So the LCAP should tell the story of how, what and why, the services that we selected. And how they meet the local needs and describing the actions and the goals. And then, once again, like I said, addressing our sto, state and local um priority. Next slide. So there are some new components to the LCAP. Um, under the plan summary, um, there is the dashboard performance reflections. And this is an annual performance where we actually look at our dashboard data. Um, and you can, anyone can look this up, it's it's on Data Quest, but if you also look it up through CDE. Our district will come up, you can drill down and look at it school by school. Um, but basically, it's just an annual reflection, looking at our dashboard data and also looking at our local data. To um really think about, are these um strategies that we put forth effective? Um, there's also a summary of technical assistance. And it, um, in this case, it identifies the reasons that our district is eligible for technical assistance. And um we do fall under that category. Um, a new required goal is the equity multiplier schools. Um, initially, we were told we had eight schools and then the final count was two schools. So we have two schools, Greenwood and Lincoln, that are equity multiplier. And there is a, um, I don't wanna say a pretty complicated formula, but they do look at a lot of different criteria. Um, for sure, data, academic data, um, attendance, they look at. Um, I would say um transency, so um students that maybe move in and out. And those two schools um do fit that category. And so those schools get additional funds and they have to create a goal of how they're gonna use those funds to meet um better student outcomes. Um, in addition, there are some new required actions that are related to long-term English learners. We talked, talk about them as medals and low performing student groups and schools and technical assistance. Um, and lastly, analysis of ineffectiveness of any actions. And so the goal for these next three years is as we look at our actions, we are to look at metrics both. It could be statewide data or local data, and we have our own local um data that we do look at. And at the end of the year, we would have, we would go back to have that annual um reflection to say if we would keep that. Strategy or not. And then metrics to measure effectiveness of the contribution actions.
Miss Neely Johnson, sir, very interrupt. President, um, I would like to make a motion to extend our meeting cuz we have five minutes left.
To what time, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to extend until eleven thirty and hopefully we won't need the whole time, but uh because we have a, still a. The budget after this and then um we have three bold items from consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Thank you. Alright, let's take a vote to extend to eleven thirty. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Miss Neely Johnson, I apologize for interrupting you.
Okay, I'll go as fast as I can. So, um, LCAP, um, excuse me, we should be on structure and content. Thank you. So, um, in section one, that is the plan sum, summary, and it is composed of general information. It provides an overview of the five goals and the structure of the LCAP. Section two is a plan summary reflections, and that's our annual performance, and we did go through that process. Um, this year, and then section three is the plan summary, and it talks about the technical. Assistance and comprehensive support and improvement. And those are our CSI schools, and we have approximately eight schools. That we provide additional support and we work with our county office to um get technical assistance. Next slide. Section four, um, that's our educational partners and it summarizes the process employed to engage. Um, our partners in the LCAP development process, and these groups are listed here. Our local control accountability plan, parent student committee, which is our DL cap. Our asset, African American Parent Advisory Council, which is our APAC. Our multilingual district advisory committee, which is our MDAC. Our community advisory committee, which is our CAC, Public Act Advocates and Healthy Richmond. And then section five includes goals and actions and met, metrics, and this is how we monitor our um success. We include uh metrics that are aligned to our state's eight priority areas. And also, um, at the end of the year. We do a report. And now this year, actually started this year, every February, there is a mid-year report that is required as well. Next slide. This is the goals and actions. This is the new template. And so last year's template looks a little different. This is the new template. And it's supposed to be um easier to read and identify and just better public facing. So there's a goal description, um, the type of new goal, that's a new component, um, the state priorities that are addressed. Um, why the district has developed this goal, um, measuring, reporting results. And then goal analysis before actions, actions and then action tables. Next slide. So goals and metrics, the um goal is to identify the type of goal that we're implementing. Um, our focus goal, the equity multiplier focus goal for those two schools in our case. A broad goal and then a maintenance of progress goal. And then there's the state priorities that are addressed by this goal, and then the metric identifies the standard that we use. Working towards that goal. And sometimes when we look at um goals, we're really looking at measuring over time. And that is what we did identify in terms of, sometimes a goal has multi-year goals that we're working towards. An example is, for example, like suspension rate. If you had um a fifty percent suspension rate, the target for year three outcome would be to reduce by five percent each year. And then the action would be. How do you do that? Having training and PBIS, which is um really focusing on behavioral intervention systems. Next slide. So, um, required metrics, once again, these are some of the new things that we talked about. So for um district-wide actions, what are some of the contributing to increasing or improving services? So for each action, we um look at, is this action contributing? Is it something that is where we're moving towards progress? And if so, we would identify one or more metrics to monitor that effectiveness. And we would include the actions and the budget. Um, for equity multiplier, for each um goal, the LEA must identify the specific metrics. Right, for this specific subgroup that that school is measuring to support. And the specific metrics that are used to um progress monitor. Next slide. So goal one is more focused on the authentic engagement. And so when we really looked at what were some of the um. Areas that we wanted to focus on, the number of schools with ninety five or percent higher attendance for the twenty two twenty three school year was our. Um, we continue to remain low, so that is something that we wanted to focus on. And then we look at the California dashboard data, because that is what we are really ultimately measured by. Even though we may have our local metrics, at the end of the day, the dashboard data is determining if we're making progress or not. And sometimes sanctions or others um recommendations come with that when we're not making the type of progress. So dropout rate, graduation rate, chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. And that's for the authentic engagement section. Next slide. Um, so this is just more um specific in terms of how we plan to do that. So really having a heavy focus on our family and community engagement. Um, I know that um we have hired additional staff to support that department. To support schools in implementing family engagement plans. Um, our community schools, making sure that those programs are aligned with um what we're doing for families. Cuz it's more of our wraparound um process, they're looking at academics and supports. But they're also looking at how we integrate the support and enrichment. To make sure that the student has a, I wanna say, a whole positive child experience. And then um visual and performing arts programs district wide. Next slide is universal systems and accessibility support. Um, this is a critical um area of need. Um, as we've heard uh many times this year, um, we don't have enough teachers. We have experienced a teacher shortage. And so I'm really looking at how we continue to use these um funds to recruit. And to um retain and also to grow our own. And so we have residency programs, but we also can use some of these funds. To look at other ways of bringing in teachers to um be a part of our system. And goal two, more specifically, um, and that kind of outlines some of the actions, interventions and support. Um, additional staff for our identified schools with a high percentage of UPC. Um, the training that goes into our teachers to build their capacity. Um, working and paying for contracts with Teach for America to recruit more teachers. Um, with the teacher shortage, we're all scrambling and in competition for um teachers. Continuing the support in our residency programs. Many times our residency programs provide a level of support. But living in the Bay Area, if there are other things that we can do to provide additional um stipends. Um, to get them to consider being a part of that um program, it's something that we would do. Um, and in addition, we also focus on creating and maintaining competitive salaries. And so that's something that we've talked about over this year as well. Goal three is the relentless attention to achievement. And as you see, when we look at all um students in these areas. Um, there are, we've had some growth, but we still maintain a lot in the red. And so really looking at how we can create more intervention. Um, and I would say daily intervention. Many times we've done a lot of after-school intervention, but actual intervention happening within the school day. And um making sure that we have those um staff that can push in and provide additional support. And so this next slide just sort of um highlights some of those things that I said. Um, specifically highlighting um that. In addition to writing our strategic plan and the LCAP plan. We also made sure that our SPSAs, the sites we're writing, were aligned with the same areas. So um helping them really look at how they leverage their own resources at their sites in addition to what we're doing centrally. And goal four is focused on students with disabilities. This is an area that we saw as a critical need and our dashboard um also indicated that. Um, specifically, they're um trying to close the lean, learning gap between English language arts, math, and then college and career readiness. And so we've added that LCAP goal four to strategically, strategically address the needs of the students with disability. And so um, that means making sure that the support team for this special aid programs that we have instructional support teachers, that we have um, OTs, paraprofessional speech therapists to support student learning, and then also to purchase some of the adaptive curriculum that is needed for those students to access. And then El Cap, next, oh, thank you. El Cap goal five is that's the um, targeted intervention and support, and this goal is to provide a whole holistic intervention and support for our low-performing demographics, subgroups such as Black or African-American, Hispanic, foster youth, homeless, English language learners, and socio-economically disadvantaged. And as you see, looking at the slide, there are some areas in which we did increase, but there's still too many red areas in many of our subgroups. And so although strategies that we've implemented are beginning to take hold, we do need to continue um, pursuing those strategies and sometimes even boosting, depending on the school and um, where the critical need is. And this slide just actually um, outlines some of the um, specific things. Um, one of the things I want to highlight is like, for example, El PAC. We, the El PAC, when you look at our um dashboard goals for last year, we really dropped because we did not have enough students taking the El PAC. Well, I'm very pleased to say that we did a real strategic um strategy, making sure that we supported all of the schools to get the students to take the El PAC, and we have um, exceeded um, our percentage of students taking the El PAC. And so my hope is that we will see um, achievement in that um, dashboard data for next year. So um, and that's just, and also to supporting our um, African-American students. Um, specific supports have been academic mentors in the schools and our Mission Seven critical schools. Um, once again, hiring, right? So hiring is a challenge, and so I always tell everyone, HR is not just the recruiter. We all are recruiters. And so we know we have Mission Seven schools that have high African-American populations that need the support. And so looking at how we can work to recruit um, people to come in and support. Um, and the schools that have had that, we have seen um, improvements on their local data that already scores. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moses to discuss budget.
Thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson. Good evening, board. Um, before I give a general overview of the El Cap budget, I just wanted to uh, share some words of um and what I believe are a great importance of how the budget relates to this El Cap. Uh, what Ms. Neely Johnson just presented to you are our goals and the activities that we're going to align with those goals in accordance with our strategic plan in order to make a difference and improve the academic outcomes and also the experiences of our students. I've heard public comment, um, questioning the process and the plan, and I just want to say, as it relates to the money, the budget that's allocated to El Cap depends very much on the strategies and activities that are planned within the budget. Um, I want to just address a couple of things that I heard about last, last year's El Cap spending. The reality is, we had twenty-seven programs within the El Cap last year, and twenty-five of them spent ninety-eight percent or more of their budget. Programs did use their money. Um, the majority of the money folded into the El Cap actually pays for the people who carry out the activities to support the growth and development of our programs and our students. I want to say that there was one point one million in El Cap that was not spent. Um, on the budget side of the house, we're not upset about that because it adds to our fund balance, but I want to share the reality of why that is. One program that was underspent um, was our um teacher development program, and that was underspent because we were able to shift eight hundred and ninety-two thousand in expenses to restricted funding. That was strategic so that we could retain some of that balance, given our fiscal um, outlook. The other program that did not spend all of its money was the allocation to schools. The reality is, schools only spent, to date, schools only spent eighty percent of what we allocated for them to carry out their SPSA goals. So there was a eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar balance because schools did not spend all of their funds. We'd have to analyze with the school sites why they aren't spending their money. But the reality is, um, the money that was budgeted for the El Cap last year was well, well-budgeted and spent according to the program goals. Um, I understand the concerns about the process. I understand the concerns about the data. But as it relates to using the budget to carry out the goals as stated, I believe that both educational services and business services uh, did a great job of carrying out and monitoring how funds were spent. So I just wanted to start with that. Uh, with that said, we have condensed from twenty-seven programs because listening very intently to the community feedback, that they need to be able to understand what's happening, what's happening with these programs, what's happening with these goals that Ms. Neely Johnson just shared with you. So we have consolidated some of the programs that we feel like um, actually uh, complement each other and go together well, so that we can better provide data to the DL cap committee, so that moving forward, we can look at the progress of students, the goals, the budget, and get a better picture of um, the effectiveness of what we're planning and how we're spending. So I just wanted to state before I go over the general numbers, because tonight they are general numbers, but they're general on purpose. Because as you read the El Cap and the strategies that are in, included in the El Cap, we want to ensure that um, during these lean budget times, we're very careful in how things are budgeted so that we can be diligent and effective in how we carry them out. So with that said, I'm going to just give you the overview of the general budget as it is required by this presentation, but I'm happy to come back at another time with more detailed information for you. Okay, thank you. So if we take a look at slide number twenty-eight, it's the budget overview for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And if we look at the large pie, oh, next slide. Oh, previous slide, there we are. If you look at the larger pie, pie chart on the left, what you see is all revenue uh, from the general fund. And um, what you see in the blue piece of that pie are the total LCFF funds. When we refer to LCFF, we're including all general funds plus El Cap. So if you look at the pie chart on your right, that is a more accurate picture of what's included in the El Cap, um, that smaller blue piece where you see the amount of sixty-four million, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. That is the amount of money that's allocated to this plan. Next slide. So we want to look at the El Cap plan and the El Cap budget in terms of our combined oper- well, combined operating and restricted budget. Um, our district is, this number is a little off just because the slides were created prior to finalizing budget numbers. Uh, but we have about five hundred nine million dollars in total expenditures for our district. Of that sixty-four million, sixty-four point eight million are included in this El Cap plan. Next slide. We're also looking at the expenditures from last year. Last year's El Cap budget was sixty-two million, sixty-two point seven million, and we're required to say how much of that was, were, how much of that balance was budgeted for high-need students? And in our district, all of it was bout, was budgeted to meet the needs of our highest-need students across our schools. And uh, one hundred percent of that was the actual expenditures for the high-need students. And here, I, I'd have to check with um, our budget team, but they're looking at what was spent on the goals. So while we did have a balance left, we did still spend the money on the goals just from a diff- different resource. Uh, as you read through the El Cap, you'll notice that there is an expectation that our El Cap plan not only utilizes El Cap dollars, but other funding sources as well. And with that, that concludes the budget slides as required for this presentation. I'll turn it back to Dr. Hurst.
I'll turn it over to the president for any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board? Okay, we're going to do three questions and two-minute comments. Go ahead, trustee Ruckler. I'm sorry, trustee Ruckler, before you get started, do I need to close this now or wait till the end? Dr. Hurst. Do I close this now or wait till the end?
Close it now, ma'am.
Closed. We'll hit trustee Ruckler.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So Dr. Hurst, how do you respond to the DL cap's chair and Ms. Vera Allen's comments that the system is broken and that the board should reject the El Cap and not approve it?
I was actually communicating with uh, the team. Um, I'm not sure if we can reject it right now. I know that I did ask Dr. Moses to uh, reach out to county office of education and then get a response from them. But right now, um, what I'm hearing from the team is that we don't know if we can reject right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am interested to hear in, hear more about these new actions and also what has been ineffective. So in the presentation, I believe I captured uh, long-term English language learners, low performers and technical support is the new actions. And um, there was just something called ineffective. So I was wondering if somebody could expand on those areas and explain what the plan might be?
So um, basically, the goals that we put forth, we would, we had to look at the goals that were currently in the last El Cap, and to see some of those strategies that we used, whether they were effective or ineffective. And what we did is we looked at some local metrics, our, our local data, but we also looked at our um, El Cap data. I mean, our dashboard data as well. So um, in some cases, we did, um, like um, Dr. Moses said, we did consolidate. We actually sometimes said, you know, this re- this strategy doesn't go here, and we removed it. And so that actually should be in the, it should be in the plan where it shows what we kept and what we did not.
Okay, thank you. And then how is, how are parents, the parents and students involved in the formulation of this new three-year El Cap? And there was some work last year, um, I know, well, how are parents involved, especially the committees that gave recommendations? And then I believe there were also, there was a parent bill of rights that was uh, to be developed. Would you be able to update on that?
So this year, like I said, we did use the strategic planning process, and we asked some specific questions, but also our PACs gave us recommendations. We did review those mech- recommendations. And um, I just was actually checking with director Blake about, you know, the changes, some things, when we get recommendations from PACs, we can review, modify, or decline. Um, I know the recommendations that came to educational services, there were, um, we actually agreed with most of the recommendations, but there were some that we felt were, um, it wasn't really a recommendation. It was uh, more of a directive in terms of having the ability to deny contracts, and that is not the purpose. And so we asked that that wouldn't be tweaked. And so um, I just was actually texting with her, and so she did share some of the updated language. And so we will be sending that back to um, the different groups that did make those recommendations. Because we received recommendations from the DL cap committee, the MDAC committee, and the APAC.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt Gonzalez-Law, you have questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I have two questions for Dr. Moses and one from Ms. Neely Johnson. Uh, Dr. Moses, I'll start with you. Uh, my first question is, out of the sixty-four point eight million from the El Cap, what percentage of that goes towards staffing?
Great question. In twenty-three, twenty-four school year, ninety point four percent of the El Cap went to staffing. It's projected that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, ninety-one point six percent will go to staffing. And I'll go back one year prior from twenty-two, twenty-three, eighty-five point four percent was staffing.
Thank you. We heard, and you meant you talked about the funds that were underspent in the El Cap. Looking at the projections for this year, is that already being considered into the fund balance? And if not, bear with me, and if not, could that be used towards something that has not been allocated on in the budget? Hope that makes sense.
It does. That's a good question. The El Cap is a living document. So at any point, if we feel like a strategy is not effective and we haven't expended all funds, then there is usually a request from educational services or a department within educational services uh, to shift gears. If it's appropriate within the plan, we allow it. If it's not written in the plan, we ask them to make adjustments to the plan. Uh, so I think what I'll say is that doesn't happen very often, but we want to ensure that the strategies are implemented and that all funds go to students in the year intended. So we do have those kinds of um, changes that could be made throughout the year, as long as they're in line with the intentions and the uh, procedures required by the El Cap plan.
Thank you, Dr. Moses. And my last question is for Ms. Neely Johnson. And thank you both for the presentation. I forgot to mention. Hearing tonight from the feedback from the DL cap committee, especially the DL cap chair, um, what would be your recommendation, Ms. Neely Johnson, for next year's planning? Uh, for things you would do, you would recommend the department or the district to do differently? Or uh, to do better after hearing that feedback?
I think it's really the process that we've been doing with the board. Um, having departments come and share the strategies and actually talking about the effectiveness. Um, I think, um, not, I think, I know we need to do more, um, I call it a progress monitoring. And we tend to, you know, do a data summit at the beginning of the year. We may, and then we do it at the end of the year, but there's nothing really in between. And we um, have our local assessments happen um, probably almost every eight weeks. And so really being strategic and aligning when we present to our PACs about the data and progress that um, we're making with that local data for sure. So you know, we would still have that high overview, which is that dashboard data, which is what we're judged by. But also too, I think when, as a district our size and where our students are performing with our local data, which is part of the reason we chose that, is that you can see students making progress. And so I think that we don't always tap into that to see. So we look at that high-level data and it's look, it looks very red, but we don't see a student going from three grade levels below to one grade level below. That's progress, right? And we know that it's not going to just happen. You can't make that up in a year. Maybe you're making it up in two years, and it's intentional, and it's using the same consistent strategies. And so um, the new people coming in, um, I would say this year, you know, and I don't know if I've said this, and maybe I can just say it now, I will be retiring um, at the end of this month. But um, one of the things that we've talked about is really actually all talking, you know, bringing educational services and business services and special ed. We meet once a week now, and initially it was, everyone's doing their own thing. And what we realize is that we are all interconnected. And this El Cap really shows that all of these subgroups that we're talking about here, each of our departments touch them in a way, so we need to be more aligned. And so it is my hope as things are moving forward, that that alignment happens. And honestly, I've seen that with the SPSA. You know, everyone completed their SPSAs this year and really looked at having a focus and having a focus on and really looked at having a focus and having a focus on specific subgroups. We're looking at aligning our instructional strategies with our instructional observation tool. We're using a common assessment, and that's moving to high school next year, right? And so, having a lot of those systems in place, we're going to start to see the forward movement. But we do need to be lockstep, and we do need to have staff to do that. Specifically, teachers and support staff.
Thank you so much for that response. President Smithfolds, that was it. Thank you.
I think that I had a couple of questions, but you answered them. One was about it being a living document. That's, that was gonna be one of my questions. The second thing is, do you believe that it is just as crucial to have the PACs come together also? Because we have, we have so many PACs that have intersectionality, especially when you see it at the LCAP level. So, I know that they have their independent meetings. But I think that, and please tell me if you agree or not, that it would be a value to have those PACs come together before we have the LCAP and multiple times throughout the year to talk to each other about how their individual subgroups are doing and where the alignment is and where they can all come together with an agreement that says this, much like Solutions is doing. These are our goals that we're going to make sure that are being accomplished because we have that intersectionality. Do you think that that would be something that would be a benefit to the LCAP process?
I'll take that one. Absolutely. And I think that that's an area where we need to actually work a little harder. We haven't had a large attendance at our DL cap meetings. We're also not having a really large attendance at our PACs at the school sites, I hear. So, I think that just as we've been doing with the budget, just trying to build understanding, I think we need to start there and just really work hard to increase engagement and bring those ideas forward frequently and consistently instead of just a few times a year. So, I agree.
Thank you. Dr. Hurst, do you agree that it would be beneficial when we're building out our bi-monthly agendas to include conversations about the LCAP like we do about the budget at at least one of those agendas a month, if not both agendas a month?
Absolutely, ma'am. I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you. And finally, would you agree that encouraging our PAC members to come to stand-in reports would also help create an understanding with the board before we talk about LCAP, where their priorities are and how we can ensure that we're monitoring that those priorities are being addressed in this living document?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'm complete. We are now moving to comments. Does anyone have any comments about the LCAP? Can we put a two-minute timer on the TV, please? Or the monitor, please? Thank you so much, Trustee Reckler. I saw your hand.
Thank you. So, I have to tell you that the comments by the DL cap chair and Yolanda Vera Allen, I feel like I got kicked in the stomach. And especially from Yolanda, who I've worked with very closely on this document and on this committee for years and years and years. And to hear her say reject it, I want to tell you that that really affects me. And I want to respect the work and I want to respect everybody's workloads. But to hear that the process is completely broken and parents don't feel heard and that they don't feel that their actions are reflected in the plan. I don't know what you can do between now and budget adoption to get their buy-in, but that's extremely important to me. And you know, I've, I've, I've never heard that before. I just have to be honest about that. Thank you.
Kurt Gonzalez-Law?
Thank you. First, I want to thank both of you for this presentation. Ms. Neely Johnson, we're gonna celebrate you, I think, at the next board meeting. So, I won't say much, but I appreciate you bringing this forward as one of your last meetings. And with that said, I, you know, I agree with some of the comments from Trustee Reckler. I was pretty shocked to hear from the DL cap committee. With that said, I think that this year we focus mainly on the general budget. And we put our energy in the fall in creating the cuts they'll bring to the spring. So, you know, I think that next year we have an opportunity to do this differently. And I think that there has to be a marriage between, or maybe it's the wrong word, but a collaboration between the Budget Committee and the DL cap and both processes, especially if we have to look at more cuts, which we do, so that one doesn't get dropped over the other. And I say that with some weight because I don't think that it was the fault of anybody, just because it was the first time we're actually going to cuts into that deep. So, all of us together, at least. So, a lesson learned, I think, is that. I think that next year, we invite the DL cap chairs, the APAC, the committee chairs to come to our budget meetings as well so that we can talk about both processes. Because even the Budget Committee, we don't really discuss the LCAP. We just discuss the general pieces of it. So, with that said, I hope that there's, we're able to have some conversations in the next two weeks. But I understand where we are in the process, unfortunately. We're not in a position where we can reject the LCAP at this point. So, I hope that we're able to incorporate some feedback at this, you know, in the next two weeks. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Kurt Gonzalez-Law. I think for my comment, what I would like to see are strategies and resources for increasing the number of parents in, that come to PAC meetings. Because I think that what we also need to take into consideration is we have to expand our message and feedback that comes back to us. Because I don't think that we need to make any decision without a a guide from hearing the voices of a large majority of our community. So, I think one of the things that we can talk about, and Dr. Hurst, maybe you and your team can talk about, is how do we communicate at the very beginning of the year, even starting in the summer, when we are having back-to-school events, when we're having national night outs, when we're having all of these things to say, hey, this is how you can make a difference in WCCUSD. We need your voice and we need to turn up the volume of your voice at our PAC meetings because we have a lot of opportunity to garner feedback, but we need to be able to do that at a very large level. We are a huge district. And we need, and we are not a monolith. So, we need to hear from a lot of voices often. So, how do we increase the resources? How do we tap into our communities? How do we do it at multiple levels? How do we do it in multiple languages? How do we do it at multiple times? How do we look at the times that we're holding the PACs, the places that we're holding the PACs? Are we doing it via Zoom? Are we doing it hybrid? Are we doing it in person? What are the strategies that we're using to elicit that information that helps us shape our LCAP and get the feedback that we need to make sure that we are doing the very best we can to serve the community? So, I think that deserves maybe a conversation and, and bringing some of those resources back to the board and finding that PAC that has a lot of people and then asking what strategies they are using to make sure that they are reaching their community. So, I think just a little bit deep dive into root cause analysis and what we're doing would help us in this with the LCAP like we did with the budget. So, I am complete. I'm not sure if I closed it already, but I think I did. I did. Thank you. We are now moving to F2 Public Hearing, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five West Contra Costa Unified School District Annual Budget. I'm opening that public hearing now.
Thank you, President Smithfolds. Education Code Section 42127 requires that the governing board hold this hearing prior to adopting a budget for the subsequent year. The budget must be adopted on or before July first. Tonight's hearing is the first part of a two-part process. We'll be bringing the budget back for consideration at the next meeting. And I'd like to share with you our budget presentation. So, first, I'd like to start off the hearing by acknowledging our Director of Business Services Fiscal, Jeff Carter, is here with us tonight. Thank you, Jeff, for being here, as is our Senior Administrative Assistant Veronica Vega. And I'd just like to extend an appreciation for the entire Business Services team. This is absolutely a team effort. We're working together in order to get this right. We still utilize the services of our consultant, Miss Shannon Norris, from Ryland School Business Management. So, we'd like to thank Shannon as well and appreciate the partnership with the County Office in supporting us to pull all of the data together necessary to create this budget that we're presenting to you tonight. Next slide. And this is our budget cycle slide that you've seen during all of our presentations. We are at the June public hearing for budget and LCAP adoption. I will share that I did find information submitted by the county that the LCAP and the budget go hand in hand. If we do not adopt an LCAP, we cannot adopt a budget. So, we'll bring more information forward as questions continue to arise related to that. But tonight, our purpose is to have this hearing, and we'll be bringing this back in two weeks in order to ask for consideration for adoption. Next slide. Prior to addressing the next slide, I'd like to also acknowledge our Fiscal Advisor, Geveta Cleveland, who was here with us this evening to report on this item with me. However, the meeting did extend quite late and she needed to leave, but she will be back in two weeks for the next budget meeting related to this adoption. All right. So, this slide has to do with the economy, the economy and public education. We use key guidance from our governor's May revision in order to create this, this proposed budget for you tonight. And on May tenth, Governor Gavin Newsom released the May revision. The deficit in the budget has been both adjusted up and down since the January budget. We're projecting twenty-seven point six billion dollars state deficit, which thankfully, due to the priorities of our state, is not impacting education greatly in this moment. Next slide. However, there are some themes from the May revision that I'd like to just lift up for you. One is that although K-14 education continues to be shielded from ongoing programmatic reductions, we are expecting to fully deplete the Proposition Ninety-eight Rainy Day Fund. The state is needing to do the exact same thing that you're gonna see we're needing to do, which is rely on reserves in order to ensure that we can meet our financial obligations. Next slide. We also wanted to highlight from the May revision presentation, the risk to our state budget. We are funded completely for operating, operational side of our budget by the state. So, when the state economy suffers, so does the school district budget. We have issues with inflation. Unemployment is at the highest level. We have the highest unemployment, unemployment rate in the country currently. The economies are in a slow-growth pattern. If, if inflation continues to rise, then an increase to rates or the federal rate is holding steady, but we anticipate inflation may continue to rise. And also, there are several geopolitical factors that are impacting our economic stability. Next slide. Local budget factors that we needed to consider as we created this proposed budget. You're going to see the result of a financial summary of all of the known factors that we have for our fiscal outlook from the beginning of this fiscal year through May of twenty-twenty-four. You're going to see tonight a proposed budget for the next school year and the two subsequent years. Staffing and programmatic plans drive these expenses. Next slide. These are the planning factors for the proposed budget. We've known, we've heard in our interim presentation that COLA continued to fluctuate this year. We have landed on a one point oh seven percent COLA for the upcoming school year. And the two subsequent years, the COLA has decreased slightly. But we're grateful that it has not dipped as low as this current year reduction. We also want to point out that CalPERS contributions are rising, although we're hopeful because the CalSTRS rate, they're holding steady, as is the unemployment insurance rate. Next slide. We wanted to just review some of the development factors, some of the factors that we really consider heavily when creating a budget for, for the district. The first one, of course, is enrollment. Enrollment impacts staffing plans. It impacts the revenues that we bring in. And the per pupil allocations also play a role in the enrollment and where we have strong enrollment and where we may have declines in enrollment. An example of that is this year, we added additional TK classes. Adding those additional TK classes actually increased our revenue quite a bit. And we're, we are also encouraged by the new TK classes we'll be adding in the upcoming year. We expect those to add revenue as well. We also have to look at the subset of student enrollment because funding, it varies, it fluctuates depending upon student need. For example, the UPP count and the special education population, those are areas that bring in additional revenue to support student needs. But we also need to be mindful of the expiration of our COVID-nineteen funds and the staffing shifts that were required as a result of that. Any staffing positions that were ongoing and paid with that, those restricted funds needed to be shifted over to our general fund. So, those adjustments for pre-COVID programming also played a role. Next slide. Also, we've really tried to be mindful this year on the availability of restricted resources. And it's been a goal of Business Services to use those resources for expenses that are not ongoing, so as to save as much revenue as we can for the general fund for ongoing expenses, given our budget deficit. We'd also like to share that the AB twelve hundred that we presented this evening mentioned a one-time bonus is using restricted funds. You're gonna see a budget tonight that actually includes that as a component of the budget as well. Forecasting that, we will move forward with it should the, should the board approve those expenditures. We also looked to adjust the multi-year projections to match these assumptions as described. And also, we had to consider our fiscal solvency reductions and the fiscal solvency plan that was approved with the last school year's budget in order to continue to ensure we can meet our ongoing obligations. Next slide. Here, I wanted to show an ADA analysis. We talk a lot about enrollment because the number of students we have enrolled really does matter, but the funding factor, the largest funding factor is the average daily attendance. So, I wanted to show in this slide, there is a difference between the average daily attendance in the current year and the rolling average daily attendance that we use. We're able to use whichever ADA rate is more favorable. And due to the COVID pandemic, we've been using that three-year average ADA in order to achieve a greater funding for our district. If you look at the chart, the orange bar represents our current ADA, but the green bar represents our funded ADA when we use that three-year rolling average. So, you'll see that for the upcoming budget year twenty-four, twenty-five, although our ADA rate is listed at twenty-two thousand eight hundred fifty students, we're funded for twenty-three thousand six hundred eighty-five students because of that three-year rolling average. Next slide. On this slide, we're showing the local control funding formula. The green bar represents our base grant. The orange bars represent the LCFF supplemental grant, which is connected to the LCAP that we just reviewed. You'll notice that our base grant amount has gone down, is, is predicted to go down for this current budget year, but that the supplemental concentration is holding steady. Next slide. So, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget plan includes several components. It includes an executive summary. You were all given a book, as well as there is an attachment on the budget presentation that shares all of the information in the book. In addition to the executive summary, you're gonna see all of our required state reporting forms. We're required to utilize a system called SACS in order to report to both the county and the state our exact financial outlook as it relates to the revenue we brought in and the expenses that we paid out. You're also gonna see a multi-year projection in the budget plan. Next slide. The importance of that is ensuring that we're, we're projected to meet our financial obligations in the next, in the upcoming three years. The budget plan is, we still have The budget plan is, we still have to close out our 2324 budget. Today is June 12th. We don't actually close out that budget until June 30th. So we do still have some expenditures coming in, although we've done really, we've really tried hard to ensure that we encompassed most of what we could in creating this budget. But we do want to name that when we actually close our books, there may be some slight shifts and fund balances are subject to change based upon these final weeks of spending and receiving of revenue. However, I want to note, starting out, that our ending fund balance, not including the 3% reserves, we've removed that amount. We're expected to have unrestricted balance of $3,354,744, which is great news. We do have money to carry over into the upcoming year. And on the restricted side of the house, we continue to have healthy reserves of $85,781,645. I do want to name that those are tied to grants and restricted funds, and they are typically multi-year plans, which is why the balance is so large. Next slide. I want to just spend a little bit of time circling back to talk about our issue with our structural deficit. We have a fiscal solvency plan. We've done an awesome job. I'm so appreciative of the board and the community and all of the staff and students and families of West Contra Costa, helping us get to our $19 million cut reduction target this year. It has tremendously helped our outlook and we are addressing the fiscal, the structural deficit effectively, in my opinion. But that information is included in this budget plan as well because we continue to have a problem with having more expenses than we have revenue. Next slide. So the definition of a structural deficit is that ongoing financial commitments for a given year exceeds that particular year's revenue. We have been holding in that space for many years and we are just starting the process of climbing out of the structural deficit. The ending fund balance and the special reserves are typically used to address the structural deficits. And we're fortunate to have been able to meet our reduction target and to also have enough reserves in order to present to you tonight what is, in essence, characterized as a positive budget. Next slide. So in addressing the structural deficit, I just wanted to make you aware of two things. That one-time funds, once they expire, they don't return. So when we overcommit with ongoing expenses, that's how our structural deficit balloons. And we're not, we're working really hard to ensure we don't continue that. But I also wanted to share in that second bullet point that we are relying heavily on reserves. Without Fund 17 reserve contributions, we would deficit spend $11.5 million in the first year, $11.7 million in the second year, and $8.7 million in the third year of these multi-year projected budgets. Next slide. We are spending down reserves in order to be able to address the shortfall and also to meet our financial obligations. We're implementing ongoing reductions of $7 million for the 2526 school year, and we look forward to working with the Budget Committee and the community and the staff in order to identify how we can achieve that together. Next slide. I just wanted to include a copy of the fiscal solvency plan that was approved with the last budget outlining on that bottom right-hand corner, the reduction target of $7 million for the 2526 school year budget. Next slide. All right, I also wanted to share some of the factors that are impacting our issue with fiscal solvency. One of the biggest that I think everybody has talked a lot about is that we have a staffing shortage. And when we have a staffing shortage and we have special education students who must have services, we have to contract those services out in order to meet the needs of our students. And so that has increased our budget contributions to special ed, not only this year, but in prior years as well. We also had the decreased COLA funding. When we adopted last year's multi-year budget, we expected a much higher COLA. We had to reduce the revenues because that COLA has been decreased. We also continue to struggle with declining ADA and enrollment year after year, although we are encouraged with TK. And then also, the cost of doing business is increasing. Our expenses for the operational budget, it's increasing and we're not adjusting our budget in order to accommodate the increases that are coming. Next slide. So now I'll share with you the overview of the budget plan. Next slide. I've prepared several high-level slides just to give you a picture of where we are, and I'm happy to take questions and bring back more detailed information, should you need that at the next meeting. This slide shows our estimated revenue for 2425. I want to thank Jeff for his tireless hours and many late hours in the office, putting these projections together, checking and rechecking them, along with our consultant Shannon and the input of Geveta and some other really smart supporters that we have. So if you look on the left side, the left chart shows the unrestricted revenues only. So we're projected to have a general revenue from LCFF of $337 million, with some other local and state revenues coming in for a total of $353 million. When we also combine our restricted balances, we have a combined budget expected, we're expecting the combined revenues to total $484 million for our district in 2425 school year. Next slide. So when we compare to the revenues, the expenditures, we have an unrestricted expenditures expected for the upcoming year, $277 million, and I'm rounding for you all. And that is awesome until we look at the contributions on the next slide. But when we look at our combined total expenditures, we see that we have in excess of our combined budget. The total expenditures expected of our combined budget is $509 million. And when you compare that to the prior slide, the incoming revenue is $484 million. So there is evidence of the structural deficit there. Next slide. These slides show the information that I just shared, but in visual format. The left one shows that the majority, that large blue component, is our unrestricted general fund, our operating budget. And when you look at the other side, where we're including our categorical and restricted funds as well, you see that, oh, I'm sorry, those are the expenditures, wrong slide. The expenditures, actually, a large proportion of those, if you look at the blue and the red and the green together, that's salaries and benefits, and that is better than three-quarters of our pie. Next slide. This slide represents the multi-year projections for the proposed budget. The column, the first column is the 2425 proposed budget, with the two columns to the right being the multi-year projections for 2526 and 2627. We've looked at this slide across the year as we've looked at our interims. We look at it again tonight to forecast our future budget. I just want to point out on this slide that the figures that we reviewed are here, and this is only as it relates to the unrestricted general fund. I pull out the restricted money because that is our money to meet the needs above and beyond our operating budget. So as we look at this multi-year projection, we're focusing on the operating budget solely. So if you look, over the course of three years, we are expected to have increased revenue, even with the decreased COLA. That's because of growing TK numbers, and we're hoping those students will stay with us and we will continue to have them included in our budget. If you also see on the second line there, we're showing that for next year, we're implementing $7 million in cuts. The 2627 year shows that same $7 million, but not as additional cuts. That's just, we want to keep those cuts in, so we can't put them back in. So that's what's being shown there. So when you see our expenditures, we look okay. But if you drop down to the contributions to restricted programs, you'll see that in this upcoming year, we're expected to need a $93 million contribution. And I have a slide that's going to show what makes up that number. But that amount is expected to grow in the subsequent years as well. And that's not only because of our contribution to special ed, but we have to contribute a percentage of our expenditures to routine restricted maintenance, and that is a large contribution as well. So what you see in this multi-year budget, I'm going to stick to the 2425 budget, and I'm going to show you that. What we're doing here is adding the special reserves just above that contribution each year to backfill our deficit spending. When you look at our bottom line, the ending fund balance is comprised of our required 3% reserve and the $300,000 stores and revolving cash that we keep on hand as a part of our operating budget. So we're really breaking even by backfilling our structural deficit with money from Fund 17. So as mentioned before, in year one, we're expected to contribute $11.5 million from Fund 17. In year two, we're expected to contribute $11.7 million from Fund 17. And year three, $8.7 million from Fund 17. These contributions are required in order to meet our financial obligations. Next slide. This slide shows those contributions that are, that we're required to make. This shows what we're estimated to contribute next year for special education. The contribution is estimated to be $81.7 million, and our contribution to routine restricted maintenance is estimated to be $10.6 million. And that is a percentage of our expenditures, and if our expenditures go up, so does that contribution. So the total contributions for next year are $92.4 million from the proposed budget. Next slide. However, I do want to show that because of the responsibility of this board and previous boards, that we do have Fund 17 to help us during these times when we are addressing the structural deficit. Currently, as of June 30th, we have a balance of $38.9 million in our special reserve fund. And you'll see the listing of the expected contributions that that fund is needed to keep us solvent. But you'll see that even after the contribution, the remaining, we still have a remaining balance of $7 million in reserves, even though we're spending down quite a bit to be able to meet our financial obligation over the next three years. I just want to end with, this is a proposed estimated budget, but the estimates are created based upon all of the data and information provided to us by our own revenues and expenditures, by the expectations of County Office and State Board of Education, and we are following all of the principles of best accounting practices in bringing forward to you these numbers and these estimates. And with that, I'd like to again thank the team. I have Jeff here. He can also help field questions, should questions arise about specific parts in the budget. So thank you for the opportunity to present this proposed budget tonight. Thank you so much. We're going to close the meeting, but we're going to get public comment. Public comment first. Thank you, staff. Oh, let me close it first, just to, nope, got to do public comment, then I'll close.
We have one public comment. Jelani Doviera Allen, can you please unmute yourself?
Good evening, West Contra Costa. Thank you trustees, Ms. Moses, for your presentation tonight. You know, when we think about one of the biggest contributing parts of our budget as being around our LCAP and that the programs, and I heard that really clearly, Ms. Moses, the programs and the feedback and recommendations from our community are tied directly to the budget. If we don't pass the LCAP, we really can't pass the budget. And so when we're looking at a situation where we really don't know that the programs and services that we're doing are effective, and in one sense, we do know, because the data isn't moving in any significant way. I appreciate Ms. Neely Johnson, the incremental changes that are happening. But I've been waiting for over 10 years for this conversation. How do we really match this together so that we are getting real data based on real science and that we're hearing the voices of your APAC, of all of your PACs? And we are talking to each other, we are talking to our communities, and no people don't want to come to another meeting where nothing is, they don't see anything being changed over 10 years. Many of our families, they want to move to our schools, and they know that change is not coming for us. So how do we move this? Let's have that conversation, because this part is.
Next public comment is Karissa, Karinza, please unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? This is Karissa Revenz. I'm a lawyer with Public Advocates. As you all know, LCFF was established to create a new era of transparency requirements, equitable distribution of resources to high-need students, and meaningful engagement with students, families, and communities. We have all heard tonight that the DLCAP committee, the primary committee in West Contra Costa that is utilized for engagement, is asking you all to reject the LCAP. I also heard from some board folks that, at this point, it's not possible. But I really want to push back on that notion. Under LCFF, every school district is required to collaborate with their community in planning this LCAP. The LCAP is also intended to serve as a mechanism to hold districts accountable for equity engagement obligations. Yet, we are hearing from the community that West Contra Costa is not meeting these requirements. Tonight is the first hearing. You all have two weeks before the second hearing to genuinely take every comment and recommendation that you've heard tonight and throughout this year and make meaningful amendments to this LCAP. While this is a short timeline, it's something that you can work within. And holding a public comment at 11:00 PM tonight also sends a message to.
Our next public comment is Pedro Ruiz. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for that actually really insightful presentation. And also, I want to speak on, again, on the behalf of several Richmond High students and in regards to the general budget cuts, of course. And in a sort of effort to urge the district to sort of keep our SCOWS positions at our school sites, as they, of course, significantly contribute to facilitating school parent cooperation and engagement. And my school already struggles with a substantial lack of parental engagement, which, of course, detrimentally affects our student performance and achievement. And by this, I fear for, I basically fear for the coming generation of students at my school for numerous students, a significant proportion of them of whom come from underprivileged and underrepresented backgrounds, would be deprived of the potential of cultivating their academic abilities fully. And by this, I just urge you to keep our SCOWS positions at our school sites, too. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We're going to close the hearing. Or do you have any questions? Trustee Recle, go ahead. Three questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. First is, if you could go over enrollment and attendance and the UPP and go through your assumptions as to, you know, like, why you think enrollment is going to be stable or up six. Attendance, I think it's going to be at like 90.2 and UPP is going to creep up slightly. Would you be able to explain that more in depth?
Thank you for the question. I'm assuming that you're speaking to the 2425 estimates only.
Oh, yes, exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask Jeff if he'll come up to the podium. But what I will say is that as we calculate ADA each year, we have to not only look at the numbers, but we have to consider what's happening within our district. We noticed that there was an increase in our TK ADA. Thus, we can deduce that the increase in, or I should say, the stability of our enrollment has to do with the ADA that, I'm sorry, the enrollment of those students in TK. I'm sorry, the enrollment of those students in TK. We then take the average of the three years for the current year ADA. That's easier to compute and to estimate because we're only allowed to use the numbers that were certified in prior years. So when we combine those two and we look at enrollment and current ADA and funded ADA. We're able to make some assumptions. We are adding, I believe, seven. Is that our number of TK classes this year, Jeff?
Adding, adding five.
Adding five this year. So we've estimated a very modest or no change at all. In the ADA, hoping that of those students, we are going to be able to recapture more. Did I leave anything out, Jeff?
No, that's, that's what I would have covered as well.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, pretty much. Also wrapped up in there, can you, you know, there were three metrics in there. It was attendance and UPP. So can you touch on those three assumptions?
Yes, well, for UPP students, we get an additional supplemental. We get additional supplemental revenue. I included those numbers in this slide just to show that our UPP number is also fluctuating a bit. If you notice, we took a dip from twenty to twenty-one, but then we had an increase in twenty-two. We were pretty stable in twenty-three. We're expecting to be stable again. And what's encouraging here is the number of forms we've been able to collect due to, I don't know if she's still here. But the diligence of Kim Chamberlain in her group. We're looking to match the way in which they were able to get forms completed and returned and be, to be considered in this UPP count. So that's the factor that we've considered here, the fact that we are getting more students. We expect for some of those students to add to the UPP. And we also expect our collection efforts to continue to be strong as evidenced by the number of forms we collected last year.
Okay, thank you. Then I'd like to circle around to this Fairmont conversation, the loss of Title One funds. They are the second largest elementary school and have more low income kids than a lot of our high. You know, because their enrollment is so much higher. They have like two hundred and fifty low income kids. It's more than a lot of schools. What are the possibilities that any funds from LCAP? Or Title One can be rerun so that they just aren't left high and dry with a eighty-three thousand dollar cut?
I appreciate that question. I listened very intently to the, the comments by the Fairmont community. And I did some research as I was listening because I, I heard. Comments such as Title One pays for online licenses. That is something we could do something about. However, when I looked at the Fairmont budget, I did not find that they paid for any licenses with those funds. So I think I need to sit down with the Fairmont principal and find out what their needs are. And be creative to try and see in what ways we can support their needs. Their Title One budget was only sixty percent spent. And it was spent on a small contract with BACR. A small amount for teacher salaries and about thirty-five thousand in materials and supplies. I do think there is something that we can do to supplement what they spent on this year. And so I'll sit down with the principal and find out what those needs are and take that back to the cabinet for consideration.
Okay, and then finally, the seven million is really a placeholder in terms of reductions, right? So that the salary plus non-salary portions of that still need to be decided. Is that accurate?
The seven million in reductions that we need to identify?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a placeholder saying it needs to go.
Yes, we'll need to do the same work this year that we did last year with trying to find where we can identify those reductions. And then we'll be able to better explain what we believe might be included in that reduction plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Clark Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the work to both of you and your department. Following on the conversation on Fairmont. If the board was to give direction to change that for Fairmont. My understanding is that there's also other schools that are actually higher in that percentage than Fairmont. So how much would it cost us to be able to say, okay, give all those schools their Title One funds for, for next year?
Actually, there's three schools ahead of Fairmont in terms of the percentages who qualify for Title One. We are cut off this year was. I believe fifty percent and thirty-nine schools qualified at that rate. If we were to add four more schools, I don't remember the exact costing that I did previously. But it would mean significant reduction to the schools that have higher concentrations. Of students with low income needs. And the stated expectation for the use of those funds is that they be used for students who come from. Low socioeconomic communities and backgrounds in order to enhance the experience and the educational outcomes. For students who are specifically impacted by poverty. So it would result in those schools being able to do less because the pie would be split in more pieces. I believe the average reduction, it depended upon the number of students who qualify for Title One. But it would be significant enough that schools may not be able to continue the program as planned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think that both of my questions were answered. Except I just wanna make sure that I have a understanding about Title One and how it's allocated. There's a threshold number that a school site has to hit. And if they hit that number by filling out the free and reduced lunch forms, it's not Paab that anymore, but fill out those forms. And when they fill out those forms, the number of forms they fill out, that is then. Used in some formula to see if they hit that, let's say now fifty percent threshold. Is that accurate? Yes, but there are other components as well. So we have to take one pot of money and distribute it amongst several school sites. We split that pot of money based upon the number of students eligible at the school sites. So the formula has to do with how many students we're serving and what percentage of students are considered. Being low socioeconomic or at the poverty level. I can tell you that in our district, the, the, we have eleven schools that are ninety percent or better. The form is called the Educational Benefits Form. And the Educational Benefits Form determines the percentage of how many students are of low socioeconomic need. We have eight schools that are eighty percent or better, between eighty and ninety percent. There's seven schools that are between seven, seventy and eighty percent, and the list goes on. So when you, when you drop down to schools that are forty percent, I mean, the, depending upon your district. The, the sliding scale is, is large because of the varying needs of different districts. If you have a very small district and you only have a few schools and the kids are concentrated in that way. Then they're able to be creative and split their money in different ways. We have a very large system serving a lot, a large number of students. So we try and ensure that each school has enough money in order to fund services and programs to meet that population. And as we just witnessed with, looking at our very large budget, it is costly. I'd have to ask our state and federal team to come and describe the calculation to you exactly. But we do have a target amount that we believe is enough for schools per student to meet the needs of their students. And when we diminish or, or increase the percentages, then that diminishes the amount that we can give to those schools. So what we're trying to do is ensure that the highest need schools get the majority of that money. Thank you so much. Ford, we are going to move to one minute comments because of the time. It is eleven fifteen and we still have consent items that need to be taken care of. Okay, anyone have a one minute comment? Okay, if we could put one minute on the clock for the board, please. Thank you, Mr., Mr. Jeff. Sorry, I know it starts with a C. Carter, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Jeff Carter. Thank you, Dr. Moses, for your presentation. Okay. Trustee Reckle, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you for the presentation again. I definitely want Fairmont to be looked at, but not only Fairmont, it's any school that got stripped of that amount of funds. To figure out how to softly land them or better land them. To, you know, that kind of cut is very difficult and so. I am deeply concerned about that amount of money, especially on the yard. I've spent my time on that yard. It's a lot of kids. It's a very small yard. It's ripe for, for issues. I also think it would be really helpful to have a study session on the budget and the LCAP. Not only is it transparent to the community, but you will receive input which will allow a better product to be produced. And I think that's really important. And I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez.
Thank you, President. Thank you again for the presentation. I just wanted to point out, these are the conversations I had this week coming to this board meeting. I was asked to increase aids in schools, increase site funds, keep scouts in secondary sites, increase allocation to wages to employees. Increase access to our facilities, hire more vice principals, pay and invest in more programs and interventions. More after school programs, more summer school offerings and better food cooked at our schools. I made a really rough calculation. That was about seventeen million dollars what I was asked from Monday to today. The reality is that our schools need more things. And yet, this year, we had to cut seventeen million dollars. And next year, we have to cut another eight. We knew this is gonna be tough. Never in my life did I think it was gonna be this hard because every week I hear about how our cuts are hurting kids. And our decisions are hurting kids. But unfortunately, it's the reality in order to keep our decision making and not have to close our schools. So I just wanna remind everybody of our reality and try to work together in collaboration to fix our problems. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. My comment is very simple. This is where we dig deep. This is where we start thinking outside the box. This is where everybody has to give a little more. I know it's exhausting volunteering. I do it a hundred and eighty days, just like our other parent volunteers that do it every single day. We dig deep because we have no other choice. To Clark Gonzalez Hoy's point, we don't have any money. We don't have anything else that we can give. We are stretched beyond thin. But like we do in our families when we come to this point, like we do in our communities when we deal with other issues. This is the time for the school community to come together and really come together. And think outside the box and dig deeply, tap our retirees, tap the people that are walking. I know in Hercules, we have a group of older adults that just walk around the, the perimeter of Hercules. Hey, get badge, come on into school. I'm gonna need you to sit here and do X, Y, Z, watch a lunchtime, do this. I don't mean to sound flippant with that, but we have to come together. There is no other choice. This is literally do or die. Okay, thank you so very much. We're now moving to consent items and we only have eleven minutes. So trustee Reckle, you pulled C fifteen. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll be brief. There are many contracts in here. That are way past their time, beginning in August of last year and earlier. So I just wanna point that out and I'm looking for improvement. There are also a couple of contracts in here that really, the one about the banners. That, that kind of spending, that it, it, no, no. We don't have the luxury of spending two thousand dollars, it looks like two thousand in change a school on banners. There's not a contract in here where the consultant looks like they put down they were paid one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And they're in excess of one thousand dollars an hour. I'm obviously in the wrong profession if that's what those people are making. So those are my comments on all, on all contracts. And just because I don't wanna be here and make people mad at me, I'm gonna move them, but this has to get corrected. This has to get corrected.
I'll second, President.
Sorry, my mic was off. Thank you very much. Let's move to the vote. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Thank you. We're now moving to C sixteen. Go ahead.
Hi, I don't have anything else. If we can just move C sixteen, I made my comment for both.
I move, sorry, go ahead.
I'll move C sixteen.
I'll second.
Thank you. To the vote, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We're now moving to C seventeen. Go ahead.
Yes, I'll be very quick with this. So first, I wanna say thank you for hearing me and revising this policy and accepting so much of it. I, it meant a lot to me to get this done and so I'm, I'm actually pretty honored that it got accepted only in totality. Almost, almost in totality, which I wasn't all expecting. I was just. Pouring my heart into it. However, there was a commitment made that it's gonna come back. So that the district doesn't have liability of six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in terms of. You know, if, if people, unfortunately, it doesn't work out and they need to be severed. And so there was a commitment that the attorney will come back and make language, which will. Not have the district have a huge future, potential future liability. And I hope everybody works out, but I'm concerned. I'm also concerned that I'm not gonna be heard because of the CBOC policy, which was supposed to come back and it would spend well over a year. So those are my concerns. And again, I'm appreciative, but I wanna make sure that that, that really gets done.
Thank you, President. I'll move C seventeen for approval.
I'll second. Trustee Reckle, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are at void comments. We are at Agenda Item G. Two, four, six. We each get two minutes. Go ahead and put two minutes on the clock. Trustee Reckle, do you have any comments?
I am no longer a parent of this district. I graduated my last child at El Srito High School just last week. I would like to say thank you to the many educators that gave my children and my family lovely experience. And that's really it. So thank you. They really did well here. They had lots of experiences. You know, they were able to do so many interesting things and. And I, I feel very grateful that they had those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoy. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to thank all of our retirees. I don't think probably any of them are, are listening except for Ms. Neely Johnson. But I wanna thank all of our retirees. We had a wonderful event. I apologize, couldn't attend, but. You know, people come to our district and they pour their whole heart and time and budget and hopes. And I'm just so incredibly thankful for everyone who comes to our schools because I know that we could always do better and we can do more. And with that said, I, I wanna thank everybody who was involved in the graduation committee. And also the graduations, they were amazing, the ones that I was able to attend, they were just so well done. I'm just so thankful for our students. They're the best part of the job. They are the hardest and also the best part, right? Because we get to hear the difficult stories, but we also get to hear the amazing things that happen in our schools. Our student trustee being one example of the many, right? So they always energize me for the year to come. So I'm truly thankful for everyone who participated on that and our school staffs and principals for putting them together. And then I wanted to just end congratulating all of our new, new, our permanent cabinet members. And our incoming cabinet members as well, as well as our outgoing cabinet members. Thank you all for holding so much of the district. Dr. Hurst, thank you as well. I know that this job can be very difficult. And you all get all the emails that we get, so I wanna say I appreciate all the work that you do. And thank you to everyone at our school sites who are still at our schools, cleaning, packing. And getting ready already for the next year. I know that many people are. So thank you, everyone, and I wish you all a happy summer. Thank you, President.
Thank you so much. I would like to say thank you for the last one hundred and eighty days. It was not easy, but easy does not mean impossible. Hard does not mean impossible. It was accomplished because everybody dug in and everybody said this is what we have to do to keep this, the students at the center of our work. So I look forward to August nineteenth. It's gonna come very, very quickly. That's when we start a new school year. I want to thank all the teachers, all the staff, all the administrators, all the employees, the ones that I saw on Tuesday. And the ones that I did not see on Tuesday. Thank you for your one hundred and eighty that you give every time. Thank you for those who have.
Thank you for your one hundred and eighty that you give every time. Thank you for those who have decided to retire. Thank you for the work that you have provided for us. We hope that we continue to move forward. Change is slow, but it doesn't mean it's not happening. It is happening at unfortunately a snail's pace, because we're pushing back on a system that was not created for the success of most of our students. But we are pushing back, and we have to continue to push because the system's gonna push back harder. So we are looking forward to, as a majority of this board, to continue to center our students, their experience and what they deserve, because they do absolutely deserve the best that we can give them. Dr. Moses, um, thank you specifically for making sure that you are explaining to us that we have to keep the most marginalized students in the center, and we do that through our budget, because our budget is our value. Thank you to the PAC members and thank you, uh, Ms. Neely Johnson about ensuring that that process is getting shored up, tightened up, and cleaned up. So then we will have that overall community engagement when we're dealing with our LCAP. Thank you to the rest of the cabinet. I don't have time to name you all by name, but I really appreciate it. For all of those who are keyboard gangsters and think that I hurt Mr. Booker and Mr. Freeze's feelings and made them feel uncomfortable when I said they were very cute when they were young, relax. They're gonna be okay, and they did not take offense, because I asked them when we had a break. Um, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate this last one hundred and eighty. I look forward to the planning that we are gonna do this summer. It is now eleven twenty-eight, and I am adjourning this meeting. Until next time, when we are at Dejawn on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Happy Father's Day to all of those who celebrate. We are adjourned.